Good evening, everybody. I'm going to call this regular City of Titusville City Council meeting to order, May 27, 2025 at 6:30. First thing I have is the invocation. Pastor Blaine, come forward. Pastor Blaine. All right, I'm not seeing him, so if you would take a moment, a moment of silence. Thank you. Can you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. City Clerk.
Individuals wishing to speak on agenda items must complete a sign-up card prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting, and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Citizens shall not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments except petitions and requests must address a pending issue, and citizens will be given three minutes to speak on all items. Citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must submit a sign-up card identifying the items of interest. Each speaker shall be limited to three minutes to speak on the entire consent agenda. All sign-up cards and exhibits being submitted to City Council should be placed in the box on the table.
Thank you, City Clerk. City Attorney, do we have a quorum?
Yes, we do.
Thank you very much. Member Nelson, are you going to make a nice motion for me?
I can. Move to approve the minutes of the regular City Council meetings on April 8th and April 22nd, 2025.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. City Manager.
Yes, sir. We have no special recognitions and presentations. Our first item of business is the boards and commissions Titusville Housing Authority. And the recommended action is to appoint two regular members to the Titusville Housing Authority with terms to expire on May 31st, 2029. The members are appointed by the mayor with approval of the City Council. Regular members Michael Van Huesen and Mary Polk have expressed their willingness and desire to continue to serve on this authority and have requested reappointment for four years, terms to expire on May 31st, 2029. In addition, there is one new application that is on file for consideration, Edna Wilson. Her application is attached, and she has expressed her willingness, desire to serve on this authority.
Thank you very much, City Manager. Are any of the applicants here? I see Edna. Is anybody else, is Van Huesen or Polk here? Not present. Edna, would you like to come up, say something real quick?
Hi, my name is Edna Wilson. I am a resident of Titusville, and I was very excited to actually serve on this board because I am a real estate broker here in town, and this is so my heart. I spend every day looking at these people who can't afford housing, and it just, it kills me. And so something has to be done, so it would be an honor to serve on a board such as this to try to find some solutions for our city.
Thank you very much. City Clerk, are there any cards on this matter?
Yes, sir. Ms. Terry, Ms. Toni Shuffalo? Oh, that's actually item B, isn't it?
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
So no more cards.
That was easy. All right. Well, I guess this, because this is my decision, this is kind of weird. Usually it's a group decision, but what I have here, and I'll pass this out to council and make sure everybody has reported it, is the attendance records for the last 12 meetings. And Van Huesen attended 10 out of 12, while Polk only attended 2 out of 12. And that leads me to the decision where I think Van Huesen and Ms. Edna Wilson should be the appointees.
I would agree.
All right. So that's my take now. You guys have to vote, and if you guys confirm that appointment.
So my motion would be to confirm Michael Van Huesen, Edna Wilson, as the two regular members on the Titusville Housing Authority.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you, Edna, for stepping up and serving. All right, City Manager.
Sir, next item is the Titusville Environmental Commission, TEC leave, and the recommended action is to approve Titusville Environmental Commission regular member Michael Majak's request for a four-month leave of absence from the Titusville Environmental Commission meetings for the month of July through October 2025.
Thank you, City Manager. Mr. Majak, would you like to stand up and say something?
Not particularly.
All right, that's all right. City Clerk.
We have two cards.
Shuffalo, Tropic Street. I will stand for Michael Majak as a member of the TEC. He's not only very knowledgeable about things that go in and out of the Indian River Lagoon, he's also very knowledgeable about trees, and those are two of my favorite topics around town. I attend many of those meetings. He runs the meeting very well and very smoothly handles dissent and situations. And now he wants to go away for four months, but he's not going to be absent because he stays, he's also very computer savvy. Did I mention he's very computer savvy? And he is quite capable of checking in with the board that he is a member of via Zoom, and we're seeing more and more Zoom. I know at one time it came up and people said, "Well, we don't want them calling in by Zoom," but I think in this case, we should actually consider it and allow Mr. Majak to live the double life that he has to live by being out of town for four months, but still being a viable and vibrant member of our community and on one of your advisory boards. He's got a lot of good advice and a lot of good knowledge, and I think it would be a shame to dismiss him from that board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Toni. City Clerk.
Stan Johnston, professional engineer, 860 Point Set Avenue. And Mr. Majak, I see him just about every TEC meeting, and he needs a break. He really does. I'm there about every time, and do you think he finds me annoying? Well, yes, he does. And he's tired of hearing me talk about spraying women, children, and babies with piss and poop, and he's really tired of that. And he's tired of me complaining about children playing in the sewage ponds, Sandpoint Park, and if it happens again at senior center. So going to Maine, I think, will maybe clear his mind a little bit, and he does need a break. And I plan to prepare some more annoying things while he's gone. And that's something he's fed up with. He's really fed up with me talking about it because sometimes I even think that there's some council members that are fed up with me talking about spraying people with piss and poop. It's annoying because what do you do as council members? What they do is they go to the bathroom, flush the things, stuff down the toilet, and then what happens? It goes to Sandpoint Park, and they turn the fountains on, and they spray people with piss and poop. I really find it to be kind of sick and depraved that y'all would do that. And I talked to Mrs. Masco, whatever her name is, and she won't, I asked her to tell me, "Why in the world are you the only person that thinks it's bad to do that?"
Please stay on topic of the appointment to the TEC.
Okay, well anyhow, he's annoyed with that, and I think you might be too. So you can understand, maybe you need a break too, just like he does. I mean, Maine might be a good place for you to go for months. So, all right.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. City Clerk, any other cards? All right, council discussion. Member Moscoso.
I was going to make a motion unless there's discussion.
All right, what's your motion?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve the request for Titusville Environmental Commission regular member Michael Majak for a four-month leave of absence from the Titusville Environmental Commission meetings for the month of July through October 2025.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion from council? All right. Well, I have something to say. I think council has allowed Mr. Majak to go on leave, maybe because there wasn't people to fill in. There wasn't people that were willing to serve, and I think we're at a different point in time when we have a bunch of people that are willing to volunteer. In addition, I would be remiss if I did not mention that I have reached out to all chairs of the boards to get to know them, to meet with them, to understand how their board works, and Mr. Majak is the only one that has refused to meet with me. And I think that says something.
You should ask.
Well, okay, I'm talking, I'm talking. Christine reached out via phone and email, and we got no reply because I think it's important that we work together. It's an advisory board, right? And I'm really putting the effort in to connect and figure out everything I need to know about the TEC. So I just wanted to let you guys know where I'm at and how I felt, and at this point, Clerk, can you call the roll?
Member Moscoso?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Connors?
No.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Motion carries. City Clerk, City Manager. Oh, I'm sorry. Vice Mayor Cole, did you have something?
I'd like to move item seven to after item 16.
Are you motioning to table?
Motion to table and move it to item right after the city attorney's report.
All right, is there a second?
Second with discussion.
All right, there's a motion and a second. All right, discussion. Member Stokel?
Yes, if we're going to move it to the end, can we just keep the one at number 13 and just have one? Is that, would that be okay?
City Attorney? Order.
I believe that if the council wanted to modify the rules of council that dictates the order of the meeting, you would need to have a unanimous approval to make that modification.
She's talking about if you just make it once.
Yeah, as we've moved items before.
You are only required to have one petitions and request for your meeting.
Okay, so we can still have to, we can still move it, I guess, to remember Vice Mayor Cole's request of having it after 16, so we're not taking away one. That we can't do, but we can move it.
Yes, you can move it.
Okay.
All right. Member Moscoso?
So what is being proposed is moving petitions and requests to the end of the meeting. Is that correct?
The first one. We still have the second one.
Yeah, there's still two.
Still have the other one.
But they're both going to be towards the end of the night. So for me, we have all of these people here, all of our constituents who want to speak, and they come at a certain time because they know petitions and request is early in the meeting. I do not feel comfortable or feel that it is right that we move petitions and requests to the end of the meeting. I think it's our job as council members to listen. People go to work. Our meetings sometimes get out at 11:30. To ask that these people stay until 11:30 so they can bring whatever they need to say to us, I think is the opposite of what we should be doing as council members.
Thank you, Member Moscoso. Well, as this is a business meeting, and our goal is to get through it, if we get through it, you know, it'll probably be faster, but that's just my take on it. Any other discussion? Member Nelson?
I sort of get the idea that we would like to get some of the business out of the way. And so my suggestion would be that we look at doing petitions and requests after the consent agenda. So let's get the majority of the business out of the way before we delve into that. That would be my suggestion.
Thank you, Member Nelson. See no further discussion. Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Yes.
No. And I will answer the point of order. The reason why point of order, you didn't get a chance to speak, is because this is procedural in nature and not requirement of the public comment. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. City Clerk.
Member Nelson? Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Moscoso?
No.
Thank you very much. Motion carries. Consent agenda, City Manager. Ms. Conklin, Ms. Conklin? Don't make me warn you again. Thank you, Ms. Conklin.
Yes, sir, we have four items on consent. Any members of council wish to pull any of the consent items from consent?
Vice Mayor Nelson?
I don't want to pull it, but I did have some questions.
Order.
I did have some questions on item A, but I don't think it requires pulling. It's just more information.
Yes, ma'am.
Any others want to pull anything? Vice Mayor Cole, your light's on.
Oh, sorry.
All right. Kevin, is there any cards on consent?
Yes, sir, we have three cards.
All right, first one?
Sir, I'll read the items for the record. Consent agenda item A, emergency purchase order for a fire apparatus. Approve the emergency purchase of a fire apparatus in amount not to exceed 1.2 million and authorize the city manager to execute all necessary agreements and documents associated with the purchase. 8B, use of City of Orlando contract IFB 23-0119 for sidewalk inspection, grinding, removal, and repair services. Approve the piggyback use of City of Orlando contract IFB 23-0119 for sidewalk inspection, grinding, removal, and repairs awarded to American Grinding Company with an estimated annual expenditure of $181,000. 8C, Area 2 and Area 3 wellfield rehabilitation agreement with Ams Incorporated. Authorize the piggyback of contract IFB 40-0-2022 SM between the City of Palm Bay and Ams Incorporated for Area 2 and Area 3 wellfield rehabilitation work to conduct inspections and rehabilitation work as needed, not to exceed $100,000, and authorize the mayor to execute the piggyback contract. 8D, advisability, consideration of options for the reallocation of former North Brevard Economic Development Zone tax increment financing contributions for economic development purposes. Request an advisability from the City Council to direct staff to explore and present options for the strategic reallocation of tax increment financing TIF funds formerly contributed to the North Brevard Economic Development Zone following dissolution of the NBEDC by Brevard County.
Thank you, City Manager. City Clerk, can you call the card, please?
Yes, sir. Edna Wilson for item D.
Hi again, my name is Edna Wilson, resident here at Titusville. I wanted to tell a story about, I did serve on the Indes boards, let me qualify that. I wanted to tell a story about, I had a friend come in two weeks ago who hadn't been here about 20 years, and I said, "Let me show you around Titusville." So we get in the car because she had been, her husband used to manage Tyco. And so we drove around and start looking, and she was oohing and aahing, and I'm like, "Look across the river, there's Blue Origin." She hadn't seen Titus Landing yet. I'm like, "Look at Titus Landing." I said, "There are our little tumble tots that we own." Then I took her down past US 1, up on MEMS, and I started showing her the new coffee shop that's been opening, and then we drove by Tyco, and I showed her the new event place. As I started looking around at all the things I was showing her, I realized each and every one of those was funded because of Indes, because we sat and attracted new businesses to Titusville. And I said, "I know y'all have a really hard job to do with figuring out how we do that, but we can't stop attracting new businesses. This is the only incentive we have." Oh, I didn't tell them, I also showed her Jesse's whole thing of the new Seerstown and how all the plumbing and all the new underground stuff was doing. And it was just such a prideful moment of showing all the things that we were doing as a board to make Titusville great, right? And to do the infrastructure and do the things that we have to do. So my only reason I put in the cards, I just wanted to, just really, just with all my heart, tell you, we need things to attract these businesses. We've got to have these things. And so I don't know what that looks like because I'm not some big community activist, but please just hear my heart. We've got to have something, and I don't know what we're going to do now that Indes is gone, but let's do it together. That's all I know. So, thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk.
Jesse Wright for item D.
Good evening. As you know, the commissioners not only killed the INBES, but they assassinated it last Tuesday. So I'm here to talk about, on behalf of the future investors and the developers, people that are not present here tonight. People are going to be opening up businesses. They need some kind of a facade, some sort of a seed to be able to start a business. You can't just go in and sign the lease, pay a deposit, and start out with nothing. So I'm really hoping that the City of Titusville would be unanimous when it comes to having some kind of a economic development incentive with the 1.7 million that is in the general fund. Now, back in 2010, I purchased a property, it's a very short story, I still have a couple of minutes. I purchased a property in Jackson, Mississippi, twice as big as the existing mall right now. And at that time, based on promises of President Obama, there was supposed to be facade and seed money for the businesses that are going to start up. This didn't happen, and I lost the property. We cannot do business as developers without people coming in and opening businesses. And the businesses are not going to open up. Just take restaurants, for example. In order to do a restaurant now, you have to have a grease trap underground. That means jackhammering all the way to the sewer line. There's a lot of expenses for these people that are going to be opening up businesses, and these are going to be the people coming onto my property. And I want to be able to offer them this sort of incentive. I am sure the City of Titusville and you all be able to come up with some way, shape, or form to be able to make this thing happen. Because in reality, if you don't, you're going to be killing a lot of dreams, a lot of tax revenues, a lot of things that's going to come to the city, and you're just pushing these people out to go to a different city. So we want to keep these businesses here, and again, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. City Clerk?
Yes, sir. Stan Johnston for item A, C, and D.
Stan Johnston, 860 Point Set Avenue. No, thank you for taking away our freedom of speech for this petitions and requests of the public. But anyhow, that's another. 8A and 8C have to do with what I'm going to speak about is, what should I speak about? How about illegal activity of the Fire Department, Police Department, and Water Resources and the council? Where do I go from here? I think you've heard it before. I think you've heard it before. For example, of spraying women and children with sewage. That's illegal.
Mr. Johnson, I don't believe that's on the consent agenda. Can you please stay on topic, please?
Okay, I'm talking about illegal activity. I oppose 8A and 8C. That's Fire and Water Resources for the way they're spending their money and their training, their education, everything. And it has to do with you too. Your illegal activity involving spraying women, children, and babies with sewage. One, two, three, four, five, six, right there. Fire Department, too. I mean, Fire and the Police Department. You had no business allowing children to be sprayed. In other words, like I told you before, flushing cats. You know what cats do? They bury their poop. You know what the City Council does?
Mr. Johnson, please stay on topic. I'm going to have to sit you down if you don't talk about the consent agenda.
This is the topic. If you believe it's not on topic, you can say, "I can, I have to sit down." You can do that.
I know.
You can do that. So if you say I sit down, I will sit down. Okay, all right. So what I'm talking about is illegal activity. I do not approve of Water Resources doing. I do not approve of Fire Department. I do not approve of anything that they should do until they correct what they're doing, which is highly illegal, highly illegal. And I don't get, for example, when I talk to Mrs. Moscoso about it, she won't talk to me about what's going on, about why the four of you will not stop it. You continue it.
All right, Mr. Johnson. I'm going to ask you to sit down now. You're not on topic.
Okay, I'm going to sit down, and I'm going to, I'm going to make a request with my attorney that you took my time. Thank you.
All right. I appreciate that. There was a minute. Yep. All right. So nobody's pulling anything. We got the cards called. Can I have a motion?
Well, Ashley, can I ask a couple questions?
Yes, sir.
Okay. First, item A, the fire truck. I'm assuming we have insurance proceeds because that was a fire truck that was cheap on. Am I correct?
The insurance proceeds will cover the repairs to the truck which was damaged in an accident. We are not anticipating it. We are not anticipating any funds for the purchase of the new apparatus, but our insurance will cover repairs to the damaged fire truck, which will take approximately a year to repair.
So we do need a fire truck in the meantime?
That's correct.
Correct. And then, item D. My question was, the Space Coast EDC is supposed to provide services for all of the county, but I think because of the INBES, they concentrated on the south end of the county. Is it possible to have them come up and speak to us about what role they're planning on?
Absolutely. I can reach out to them and see if they can come up and give you a presentation as to what their plans are for North Brevard now that the zone has been dissolved.
I think that would be good.
So, Member Nelson, I hope I can answer your question. It's not that they didn't work on the entire county, it's just they did different things. Like, INBES had an actual grant program where EDC really doesn't, right? So it's providing those incentives, laying the infrastructure and the groundwork for business to develop. So, sorry, I just figured I'd clear that up.
Got it. Do you want a motion?
Yes, please.
Okay. Move to approve consent agenda items A through D.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, and that's where I go. Hey, any further discussion? I don't see any. All those in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. City Manager.
Sir, next item is 9A, a second reading and public hearing for ordinance number 18-2025, updating the impact fees for water and sewer. 18-2025, updating the impact fees for water and sewer. And our city attorney will read the ordinance.
Thank you, City Manager. Ordinance number 18, updating impact fees for water and sewer. An ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida revising, modifying, and amending Chapter 34 procedures to increase impact fees for water and sewer, specifically amending sections 34-421, impact fee intent, 34-423 imposition of impact fees, section 34-423 use of funds impact fee, section 34-440 impact fee intent, 34-441 sewer impact fees, 34-442 water charges, meter deposits, refunds, and creating 34-443 earmarking requirement and clarifying water and sewer impact fees as connection fees and providing for severability repeal of conflicting ordinances and effective date and incorporation into the code.
Thank you very much, City Attorney. Oh, Mr. Cook?
Sure. Just to kind of summarize, we brought the impact fee study to the council about a month and a half ago for approval. We advertised on the water bills that this meeting would be the public hearing for a change in connection fees. And water and sewer are both going up over a two-year period for implementation through '25 and ' '26, roughly six and a half percent water and about 12% on sewer.
Thank you. City Clerk, any cards?
One card. It's Stan Johnston.
My name is Stan Johnston. I'm a professional engineer formerly employed by the city of Titusville. And I am very much opposed to what's going on in our Water Resources Department, Water and Sewer. And this is a department that has, has flagrantly spent, wasted millions and millions and millions of dollars, millions of dollars, on what it has been doing with our wellfields and our stormwater. And I say stormwater, that was before Mr. Cook took it over, before the, Mr., we got rid of Mr. Stauffer. It's horrible. I'm talking about millions and millions and millions of dollars. The area of critical concerns is nonsense. 1985 freshwater management study talks about the Guyman-Hurstberg principle, and that it, it's used for our area of critical concern and, and use, and reason for construction of dams. It's valid. It's invalid in the city of Titusville. There is no unconfined aquifer in the city of Titusville. That is what you have to have to have that Guyman-Hurstberg principle. It's all lies.
Mr. Johnson, it has to do with impact fees.
Absolutely, and impact fees. In other words, they don't deserve any increase. They need to straighten out what they're doing. And I'm talking about even the dams. These dams that they have, every one of them is illegal. It's illegal. I mean, how can you put a dam in, in a wellfield, not, not in a wellfield, but in a low area where there's already a hundred-year flood and don't contact FEMA?
All right, Mr. Johnson, I don't think dams are on this topic. I'm going to ask you to sit down.
They are spent by water, it's been spent by the same people who have been approved them for water resources.
Mr. Johnson, thank you for your time.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to sit down. No, okay, I understand, is that I'm going to get my attorney, and I'm going to sue you for freedom of speech.
I'm sure you are.
Okay, you, you, this time is, what is it?
But we do have rules of council that say you have to be on topic for that topic, and nothing, what you said was on topic.
That is the topic. Mispending, misbudgeting by water resources.
Very much, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. You'll be sued.
City Clerk, that was the last card? All right. All right. So now we go into the, should I move, motion?
Motion to approve ordinance number 18-2025, updating the impact fees for water and sewer.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further council discussion? City Clerk?
Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Moscoso?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Motion passes. City Manager?
Sir, moving on to item 9B, ordinance number 19-2025, updating impact fees for police, fire, city hall, and public works. And this is to conduct a second reading and public hearing. And the city attorney will read the ordinance.
An ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida revising, modifying, and amending Chapter 34 procedures to adjust impact fees for police, fire, city hall, and public works, specifically amending sections 34-421, impact fee intent, 34-423 imposition of impact fees, and 34-424 computation of impact fees, and providing for severability repeal of conflicting ordinances and effective date and incorporation into the code.
Thank you very much. Kevin, are you going to talk about this one, too?
Sure. Just to, again, a short summary of the last meeting, we came with the Ray Tillis report outlining that the police impact fee will go down next year, and we'll hold that rate for the four-year period. The other three, fire, city hall, and public works will have a four-year roll-in because of the amount of impact. PD will be down roughly 7%. Fire up 26%. City Hall up 50%, and public works up 32% during that period.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cook. City Clerk?
One card. It's Stan Johnston.
My name is Stan Johnston, and I am here to ask for my constitutional rights for three minutes to discuss this issue, in which the police, fire, council, and public works are guilty of numerous crimes and violations of laws. And this affects their budget. I shouldn't be allowed three minutes to speak on this, that I object to what's going on here. And it's, we're talking about not only dishonesty, but corruption and cover-ups by the city of Titusville, which includes things like your saying that these spraying women, children, and babies with piss and poop is okay. Because you've said it many times, it's okay. It's not okay. And other things is like, for example, the, the police department, I've had somebody come up to me, I didn't know it all, and complained to me, he says, you know what, I'm talking to a police officer, and he's, he's standing in a puddle of, of sewage, and he doesn't do a thing about it. He won't do a thing about it.
Mr. Johnson, can you talk about the impact fees, please?
This has to do with police and fire. Fire, too. The fire is also responsible for allowing this to happen. It's heinous. It's a heinous thing to do. They're supposed to be like our caregivers of our community, our protectors of the public. And what do they do? They allow my children and my grandchildren and people who are sick and so forth being sprayed with sewage, piss and poop. It's, it's, it's not, it's not right what you're doing. They have no business asking for more money when they can't correct what they're doing. You have rogue people in the police and fire and other places, they're, they're just breaking the law like crazy. And in, and our, even our elected officials, some of them violate laws, and they get away with it again and again. So you guys are using lame excuses for not being honest about what you're doing. It's dishonest, and I'm, I'm not, I'm displeased with it very much. I'm against what you're doing.
So I have a question. Do you think the police's budget should go up or down?
I think someone else, you heard it. Down. I, I think, I think really it should be, you should investigate what's going on, and then, then you can, you should also take it down, sure. Because they, they need to, they need to go ahead and correct the problems that they have, and they're not doing it. They're serious problems. I was arrested illegally. I was not even, I was, when I was put in jail, they didn't even give me the reasons why I was put in jail. They're crazy. And, and, and they did all kinds of things that didn't put in their reports. So I'm, I'm also taking it to Internal Affairs. So that's another example. The police are not doing right.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for giving me my three minutes.
It was close there a few times. All right, any other cards? All right. Member Nelson?
I move to approve ordinance number 19-2025, updating the impact fees for police, fire, city hall, and public works.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further council discussion? All those in favor, oh, sorry, apologize. City Clerk, call the roll.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Moscoso?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Connors?
Yes. City Manager?
Sir, item 9C is a sidewalk waiver ordinance, and recommended action is to conduct the second reading and a public hearing of ordinance number 20-2025, amending the code of ordinance related to waivers of sidewalk construction. And the city attorney will read the ordinance.
An ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances related to waivers to sidewalk construction requirements by amending Chapter 30 Development Standards, Section 30-238 road and sidewalk requirements, and Section 30-239 bicycle facilities, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, incorporation into the code, and an effective date.
Thank you, City Attorney. Brad?
So for your public hearing, I'm just going to summarize quickly what this ordinance is. Back in August last year, this council approved advisability directing us to propose this ordinance, basically adjusting the waiver criteria, specifically clarifying how a sidewalk is determined to be not practical, and standards on the calculation of a fee and the use of a sidewalk trust fund. We currently have a sidewalk trust fund. The way a sidewalk waiver request works is through the site development permit or a building permit process, we get a request to waive insulation, required installation of a sidewalk. If they meet the criteria, it's an administrative review, then they can go forward without having to install the sidewalk. If they do not meet the criteria, they have a second bite of the apple, basically, asking if the sidewalk could be considered not practical. And there's a different set of criteria for that. If it is determined to be not practical, then they would have to pay into the sidewalk trust fund. And we currently have a fund with some monies in there. It's not very much, but it is used for sidewalk infill in other parts of the city. We found some issues related to this. We brought this up to you. We asked for an opportunity to provide some clarification and tighten the criteria, and we proposed that into the ordinance, which you'll see on page, page 368 of your packet. The first part about sidewalk criteria, we're tightening that up. So basically, if a sidewalk is already planned to be put into on that road within a five-year program, then they can, we can waive that sidewalk. That's current criteria. We're just restating it here. The other is we're redefining what that 75% rule is. It's been very difficult to apply at an administrative level. We want, mainly wanted the opportunity to kind of clarify that and make it tighter if we're going to continue to allow these waivers to be processed administratively. So that gives us some more clarity as to how we can apply this. And we think, from the staff's point of view, it's much easier to apply than the current language. And that basically means if, if there is a, from the property that's being requested to not put in a sidewalk, a certain distance of it, if there are other extenuating circumstances within a certain distance of that particular property, that we can approve that waiver. And it's a little bit tighter than what it's currently stated. If they are not qualifying for that waiver, then the other option is to go for a variance before the Board of Adjustment. So we were moving, we're proposing to remove the practical option out of this and therefore remove the sidewalk trust fund option. So it makes it harder not to put in a sidewalk. The intent of putting sidewalks is to make sure you have a cohesive network. If you're going to waive them, it should be very strict. And right now, the way the current code is and the way the proposed code is written, this does not apply on arterial roads, especially on state roads. This really only applies to local roads. So we're, we've also clarified that in here as well. So the sidewalk trust fund, any remaining funds will just be available to be used for the purposes that they were initially intended to be used, and until they run out. So with that, I'll try and answer any questions you have about this.
Thank you very much, Brad. City Clerk?
We have one card. It's Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, P E. Been here 53 years. I've lived on, in houses that do not have sidewalk. And I even lived in a house that did have sidewalk. The only house on the street that had a sidewalk. So, I'm against strict enforcement of what's going on because I see a number of things happening. One, number one is this, is this, is that we've got sidewalk that needs to be repaired, and the city can be sued if it's not, if it's not repaired. I had a neighbor fell backwards on a sidewalk. She hit her head, and it killed her. These trip hazards are serious, can be serious hazards. That's an example of someone got killed. So the city of Titusville is not, is not, is not, is not keeping up with the repairs of the sidewalk. No way. So the thing is, is when you put more sidewalk, you're adding responsibility to that. I want you to understand is that 405 along South Street from the water tower to, to a, a, a long stretch, used to have an eight-foot-wide concrete sidewalk. Guess what? Traffic tore the thing to pieces. So what did they do? They replaced it with concrete again. And traffic again, what did they do? They tore it to pieces. All kinds of ups and downs. That's what happened. So I said to John Preston, I said, listen, Peterson, I think it's Peterson, I said, listen, why don't you do asphalt? So they put asphalt in. So it's lasting far longer than any concrete sidewalk. So sometimes there's no brain power used in the city of Titusville. And this is one of the cases that I'm, think you're going to do. There's no brains in what you're doing. You're going to hurt the city instead of that. And what the city has done recently, they put in a number of sidewalks, like on Tropic Street, both sides on Tropic Street. Do we really need both sides of Tropic Street? Let me give you an example. There's no schools. There's no kids. I ride that back and forth sidewalk on, on the, on the street, and almost no sidewalk traffic. And we, we had sidewalk mostly on one side, and now we're getting it on both sides. We don't need it. It's a, it's a liability that you're, that you're encouraging. I'd say at least table this issue, if anything. But I think you, you guys are just nuts. You don't know what you're doing. Need an applause. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. And just wanted to let you know, Mr. Johnson, that in the consent agenda, I believe we, we hopefully are addressing that. So, was that the only card, City Clerk? I don't remember. All right. Kevin, a motion? Member Nelson?
Move to approve ordinance number 20-2025 relating to waivers of sidewalk construction.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further council discussion? Seeing none. Clerk?
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Moscoso?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you very much, City Manager.
Yes, sir. Item 9D is a synthetic turf ordinance, and the recommended action is to conduct the second reading and the public hearing of ordinance number 21-2025, amending the code of ordinances to provide standards for regulating the use of artificial turf. And our city attorney will read the ordinance.
An ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances to provide standards regulating the use of artificial turf by amending sections 30-202 Stormwater Management Permit, 30-321 Plant Materials, 30-323 Existing Vegetation, and 37-1 Definitions, and creating section 30-325 Artificial Turf, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, incorporation into the code, and an effective date.
Thank you, City Attorney. City Clerk?
Mike Boffo.
Ms. Mayor, I do have a couple of things I want to bring up to your attention since the last time you saw this, your first reading. There are a couple of changes on this.
All right, I'm, I'm going to get through the public comment. Thank you.
Okay. I'm Mike Boffo. I live at 3042 Eddington Drive. My son lives at 3041. We installed artificial turf two and a half years ago. Unbeknownst of the ordinance, our contractors installed it. It's been fine. It's withstood a number of storms. It doesn't pond. It's made in Temecula, California. It has passed all the EPA standards. And I'd love you guys to use ours as a, as a standard as to what should be installed. It came at a great expense, but there's a background story that we don't need to go into about the developer and how he didn't really plant real good turf for our houses. We have a very nice gated community. And then he tried to install his version of artificial turf, which is why we're here tonight, because we got involved in his problem. And like I said, it had been installed and on the ground for two and a half years before anyone ever said anything. And nobody in our neighborhood is complaining. It's just, we're kind of collateral damage. I respect the fact that the governor has a bill on his desk that will make artificial turf okay to use in the state of Florida. As you know, the complex in Viera has fifteen ball fields. It all has artificial turf. It's in Broward County. I understand the impacts, you know, to our, our, our water systems and stuff. We have other things involved that I think are bigger fish to fry than our runoff or our possible damage from our artificial turf over the next twenty years. That's all I have. Okay?
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
City Clerk?
Matt Bofa.
Good evening, Council. I won't add much more to what my father said, but I think in consideration of understanding in city of Titusville, water runoff and all of the pollutants that happens and what we all go to enjoy the river and all of that, I think when you think about artificial turf in general, what was signed by the state, both in the House, Senate, and of course, just waiting for the governor to sign, I think it should be taken into consideration and understanding. When you think about the impacts of what that is, you're talking about something that doesn't have to take any chemicals. We don't have to put down pesticides. We're not putting fertilizers down that runoff or anything of that nature. And the further impacts when certain individuals talk about an unrecyclable product. I, I work in that side of the industry and I can tell you they can be recycled properly and re-ground. So I think when you're thinking about all of that in general and where it can be placed, overall, there are positive benefits to it. I'm not saying to completely rip out everything, but I think when you do it in something that's a holistic manner to your home and you have planter beds and everything else that confides with Florida-friendly standards and what the state has said, there's a way of doing this in a very environmentally friendly way that both provides benefit to, you know, the state, but also to the individuals and our community and having a beautiful, you know, aesthetic product that works well with everything that's being required.
Thank you very much, sir. I think we're about at three minutes. The timer didn't start on me, so. But I was trying to keep track on the, the computer when I noticed. Next card, please.
Tony Shiffler.
Well, despite what's been said already here tonight, what needs to be said again and again about how bad synthetic turf is for the environment and for the people who live with it? Yet again and again, our state legislature shows its hate for the residents of Florida by passing legislation that harms the environment and the people while aiding and abetting the developers and their tangent industries. Staff has devised an ordinance that complies with the state's synthetic turf law but stands strong against the use of any other plastic plant materials. I don't like it, but like I said before, state preemption. I also don't like the P and Z recommendation to remove section F about visibility of artificial turf from, from view. Remember the public derision and humiliation the CRA got when they proposed hanging baskets of plastic flowers to beautify downtown? Plastic grass will not beautify our town despite what these gentlemen have to say because the benefits of using artificial turf are negated by the adverse effects. While applicants will claim this plastic is PFS, PFAS-free and lead-free, there are dozens of other carcinogens and harmful chemicals involved in making plastic grass, Ms. Stofel. It does deteriorate in the hot Florida sun despite what the manufacturer claims, and it slowly dissipates into our stormwater runoff, which here flows into the Indian River Lagoon. So how can that not be harmful? This ordinance will pass and people will want to use artificial grass. But it should be made as difficult as possible for them to do so so that we can maintain native and natural plants in our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tony. City Clerk?
Stan Johnston.
Stan? Has she called you, Stan?
Did she call me?
Yes.
Stan Johnston. Quiet now. Thank you. I'm a veteran and I'm also here about the Constitution. I've got, uh, I, heck, my, when I talk about the Constitution, I think about my great, I'm the great, what is it, great grandson of Benjamin Franklin Mays and fa, and son of Franklin Johnston. And I, and also I'm, I'm a veteran. So I talked about the Constitution earlier about freedom of speech, and that's number one. Number two is due process of, of law. Like when you, when you build dams in city Titusville, you're violating that.
Mr. Johnson, we're talking about artificial turf.
Please do not interrupt me.
I will get you back on topic.
No, you're taking my time. I don't know, I, I object to it because number three, I was going to say what? Guess what I was going to say? I was going to say ex post facto. Now, listen up. Listen up. Mr., Mr. Connors, I want you to listen to what I'm talking about. I'm talking about the Constitution. You have no business interrupting me at this time. So I'm asking about the Constitution because I spoke to the Board of Adjustments and Appeals about this very issue. Are you listening? You can say yes, sir.
Mr. Johnson, please stay on topic about artificial-
I am on topic. You're interfering with me.
No, you spent thirty seconds-
I'm even talking about ex post facto. I spoke, I spoke at a Board of Adjustment and Appeals meeting about this very issue, about the people who are suffering because of it. And the thing, I asked the question, is this an ex post facto situation? Do you know what ex post facto means? I hope so. Let me explain to you what it means. In other words, you don't arrest somebody for, for, for a law and then that, that you made up after, after the, 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 the action happened. You don't do it. That's called ex post facto, after the fact. You don't create a law. So I'm asking, I'm asking this young lady here, who's an attorney, she, she might know because she didn't answer the question before. Is this a situation of ex post facto?
How does that have anything to do with artificial turf?
He says it's what?
How does that have to do with this ordinance?
She just answered my question. She said this is not a case of ex post facto. So I, may I say to her, thank you? And no thank you to you for your interruptions. You have no business in doing that. I've got freedom of speech here that you've been violating and the sunshine law. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. And I do have every business to keep the meeting, um-
Beg your pardon?
I have, please sit down.
Okay, I'll sit down.
Please sit down. I have every right and duty under our charter and our ordinances to run an or, Mr. Johnson, please sit down.
I have constitutional rights, sir.
I'm not debating you. I'm listing our rules of ordinances. That's my job to keep decorum and to move an orderly meeting forward. And therefore, I have the power in me to determine whether people are on topic.
Power to break the law.
And you are yelling about things that have nothing to do with artificial turf. City Clerk, please call the next card.
We received an additional card after the item started. Would you like to hear it?
That would be against the rules. That would be up to council. Well, please make a motion to approve it so it's official.
I'm moved to approve the additional card.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, City Clerk. I just can't make that determination myself.
Christina Michelle?
Do any of these names look familiar? Strict political and economic control governs the colonial policies of modern colonial powers. Colonists are motivated by personal economic goals, establishing strict political and economic control through colonial policies, procedures, positions, with the goal to maintain power. What is a NDA?
Can you please stay on the topic of the public hearing that we're talking about-
Illegal contract, protecting sensitive information, trade secrets, business plans, client data, creating legal consequences. Tamari Charles?
All right, ma'am, I'm going to have to sit down. You're off-
I'm getting there. I said artificial turf and we getting there. We want people that will not act as barriers to information, growth, or development. I want people that protect people, love people, honor people, respect people. May I ask, do you, as members of Titusville City Council, feel comfortable in your community? Do you feel safe amongst the people you sit with?
All right, ma'am, you're going to have to sit down. You're off topic.
I do not.
Thank you.
And I do not feel safe here.
Thank you. Please have a seat. We're calling a recess.
I had one for you. Yeah. Eleven A is what I have for you.
Eleven A is the native plantings one. Eleven A is the native plantings one?
All right, well, the topic at hand is whether you have a card in for this and the City Clerk says you don't have a card. So, City Council? Is there a motion to hear Mr. Myjek?
I have no problem with Mr. Myjek speaking.
My second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Myjek, the floor is yours. Curtis, can you fix the microphone, please? Podium? Oh, thank you.
And to get a phone call back, you have to call in the first place, Mayor. You never called. You never wrote. So don't accuse me of not contacting you-
We're talking about artificial turf.
When you never contacted me-
We're talking about artificial turf.
When I start my time. Right now, we're talking about that other issue.
Your time has started.
Please reset my time. I came here to talk about artificial turf. And I know that the state has already preempted our ability to not have it. We know it's no good. We know it's not good for the environment. You just have to look at what happens to it when you decide to turn it into the landfill. It must go in a lined landfill. Now, doesn't that tell you something about it breaking down and what it creates? If you want to put artificial turf, you should create a lined landfill, a, a way to catch the leachate that comes off of it. When the water rolls and the sun beats down, ultraviolet light is ionizing radiation. It breaks it apart. The water rinses it down. Where is it going? Into our land. And that's not healthy. It's just unhealthy. The New York Times did a study. They found that to properly install artificial turf, it costs ten dollars a square foot. It's a thousand dollars for a square, thousand square feet. So you can imagine, if you took a thousand square foot yard, that would cost you ten thousand dollars to put in artificial turf if you did it properly. Well, what would that same ten thousand dollars look like after ten years? If you put in a thousand dollars of landscape material every year? In ten years, if you were planting native landscaping, you would have a lush, wonderful Florida landscape. When you put in artificial turf in ten years, you're ripping it out, leaving the land devoid, naked, and that landfill still wants that, that material. Part of it is left behind. And unless you clean it up and remove it, it will continue to live in the environment. Now, the people that live with artificial turf have a much higher present, presentation of PFOS and PFOS in their blood. They're living with it. It doesn't work the same as regular grass when you fall on it. You get an asphalt rash from this stuff. You don't from dirt. Please consider, whatever we do to put in artificial turf, make it as difficult as possible so that our environment stays protected from the water that washes off this stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Myjek.
Thank you for hearing me.
Brad? Brad, did you have anything to add?
Since the last time you saw this on, I'm going to point you to page three eighty-four of your packet. And you'll see it begins with the standards for allowing artificial turf. Under the paragraph C, it initially said, "Artificial turf shall be limited to use on developed single-family lots." That has been changed now to "Artificial turf shall be limited to use on single-family lots." Instead of the word developed, that word developed was removed. And any other instance similar throughout this ordinance, we made that correction. It was mainly just to clarify that this is specifically to single-family lots only and not to any particular development. The standards you see in here, as you know, we are, the governor has on his desk a bill, which I've attached into the agenda here. If he signs it, it will not become effective still until DEP comes up with the rules, which whenever that might be, we're not sure. So that's why we decided to go forward with this ordinance, see if we can get it adopted. At least have some standards in place. Would you see the standards beginning on page three eighty-four and the next couple of pages? It limits the location of where artificial turf can be and gets very specific as to what type of material you'd have to utilize and adhere to and how you maintain it. And if you recall, these are standards that we generally brought, found from other jurisdictions and brought to you at previous meetings. So we believe that this satisfies your request. I'll try and answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the matter? Member Stokel?
Yes, I did have one question. One of the recommendations from P and Z was in regard to J, where they suggested a CUP instead of a variance. Did you have any thoughts on that?
I don't think that's a good idea because usually a conditional use permit is something you impose on a list of permitted uses only because you believe that in order to allow that use that may be considered inside or permitted inside that zoning district might have to have an additional scrutiny. What is being requested here, and let me give you an example of that, that's a gas station, for example, in a, near a neighborhood. Might have, might be worthwhile to have an additional hearing just to make sure there might be some mitigating factors you need to consider, conditions of that use to allow to be compatible with adjacent uses. Daycare, for example, is another one, which you're going to hear later this evening. And using it as a conditional use permit to determine whether it's appropriate to put in artificial turf, you know, development standards like that, it's not typical for conditional use, for the use of a conditional use process. So to, in our mind, not able or not willing to adhere to certain development standards, that is typically the purview of variance before the Board of Adjustment. So we think that's more appropriate.
Okay. So if I'm hearing you correctly, basically, we would, if we approve this ordinance, anything that doesn't follow within these guidelines then would go to BAA. Whereas right now, they're getting all of the, BA is getting all of the artificial turf requests.
Well, they're getting them all right now.
Right.
The, the problem that the, that the board has is they do, they do- The problem that the board has is they do not have standards to really go by. And then they rely on staff to come up with that, and we don't have anything to really advise them on.
Okay.
And so, that, the benefit of this ordinance will provide that guidance.
And this will give them rules, so they don't need to go to BAA. But if they find themselves not being able to meet something and want to apply for a variance, then with this language, they could still go to BAA.
Correct.
Potentially, okay. And then, I just did want to address some of these other sections from P&amp;Z. D on the permeability, I think that they had recommended removing it. I don't think that's a wise idea.
Asking to remove F in a previous section under...
I see on here, remove part D completely, and...
Oh, excuse me, yes.
And so, that, that to me gives us some protection. So, I'm not really in favor, I think, of that. I would like to make sure that they, if they're using turf, that it meets certain standards.
This, yes, during the Board of Adjustment meetings, this is the issue typically, is what is the appropriate permeability rate? And that is a standard we do not typically, we currently have.
We don't, we don't have that.
We do not have that, so...
Okay, that's kind of, even though P&amp;Z is recommending getting rid of it, I do feel like it might be good for us to keep that one. And then, J, he answered, I think we should keep that as a variance. And then, on F, I think that's the one, when concealed. I will tell you, reading F was a little bit confusing to me because it says synthetic plants prohibited. And then, it makes it look like turf is prohibited, but then it says it's not prohibited. So, that one was a little bit confusing to read. I don't know how it could potentially be changed. But I know P&amp;Z recommended when concealed. I, I don't think that's necessary. I think we have enough of the protections in here that I'm fine with keeping that. And I think that's all my comments right now.
Thank you, Member Stokel. Member Nelson?
So, I will say, I don't like artificial turf, period. But that being said, a young part of me was like, well, it might take DEP five years to come up with standards. Should we do it now or should we wait? And I think, thinking it through, we need to go ahead and do this because then at least we have those standards. So, unfortunately, that's how it goes.
All righty. Yeah, I mean, to Member Nelson's point, you know, maybe if we get something in place a little bit early, you know, if the DEP comes out down the road, maybe we might be a little grandfathered in, maybe. Here's to hoping. Mr. Brad, did you have a comment to that?
There's one other thing I do want to bring up to you. If you look on page 385, paragraph Q, the last one. So, we debated whether we need to come up with a permitting process separate to our regular permitting process. In other words, specific to artificial turf. So, if someone decides to propose a single-family home, new construction, and they propose artificial turf at that point, it'll be inspected at that time with the completion and closeout of that permit for that development. Outside of that, we are not proposing a separate process. So, it's almost like what we currently have in our code right now, where it says you can have a shed that's less than 120 square feet in your backyard, as long as, you can put it out there and you don't have to get a permit from us. As long as you meet the code criteria. So, you just, it's pretty much an honor system in that case. But obviously, if it, it's found to be in violation by whatever means in the future, then it'll have to be corrected. That's the same concept here. So, if a property owner wants to go forward and put in artificial turf, that they meet these criteria, they're, this is the guidance they're supposed to use. But it's not gonna be a separate permit or inspection process. I just want to make that clear for the board.
I have a quick question for you. Is there a separate process if it's like 120 square feet of artificial turf? Or is it just, it doesn't matter how large it is?
As long as they meet this criteria. So, mainly, it's the locational criteria and the material. So, it's gotta be in the rear or side, and they have to make sure they utilize these materials.
Gotcha. Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion from council. Member Nelson?
Move to approve ordinance number 21-2025 regarding synthetic turf.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. City clerk?
Did your motion include the P&amp;Z recommendations or no?
No.
No, okay. Member Moscoso?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. City manager?
Yes, sir. 9E is conditional use permit number 1-2025, 5195 South Washington Avenue. And the recommended action is recommending approval of CUP number 1-2025 to allow a childcare facility at 5195 South Washington Avenue.
All right, is the applicant here? Would you like to come up and say something? You don't have to, I was just, you know, inviting you.
Sir.
Because you, you look like Darren Hill, sorry. The city clerk, are there any cards on this matter? Can you call the first one, please?
Darren Williams?
Mayor, would you like me to read the rules?
Oh, yep, sorry, quasi-judicial. Go ahead. Sir, I'm gonna let her read something real quick, but you'll be right next, so don't go too far.
During the public portion, public hearing portion of the meeting, anyone wishing to speak on a quasi-judicial item must first sign a public hearing agenda card and sign the oath contained thereon swearing to tell the truth, the full truth, and nothing but the truth. These cards are located on the table at the entrance of the chamber and should be provided to the clerk. Those speaking in favor of a request will be heard first. If you have photographs, sketches, or documents that you desire for the city council to consider, they must be submitted into evidence and will be retained by the city. Please submit such exhibits to the city clerk. City clerk, have you received signed oath cards from persons wishing to speak before the city council swearing to tell the truth, the full truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir. I mean, yes, ma'am.
Staff and applicant, please ensure that all of your witnesses that intend to speak have signed an oath card and present it to the clerk. If there is anyone present who has not signed an oath card that wishes to speak on quasi-judicial item, please submit a card to the clerk at this time. City clerk, have all agenda items been properly advertised?
Yes, ma'am.
In the event that a council member has received an ex parte communication, verbal or written, outside of the hearing, the council member shall disclose the identity of the person, group, or entity with whom the communication took place and the subject of the communication, including all opinions or facts discussed. Any written communication must be disclosed and made a part of the record. Also, in the event that a member has conducted an investigation or site visit or received any expert opinions regarding the quasi-judicial item, said visit or opinions shall be disclosed. Are there any ex parte communications that anyone likes to reveal, wishes to reveal?
No.
Not seen any?
I think, I don't know if we all have them or not, but I have four emails regarding this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We all got the same thing.
Okay, just want to make sure that's on record then.
Okay, thank you. First, we'll hear the staff's presentation, if he has anything to add, and then we'll have the applicant speak.
Okay.
I just wanted to point you to the page 430 of the report, I'm sorry, of your packet. And basically, my, we did our review of this based on the conditional use permit criteria. We found it to be consistent with the comprehensive plan with the code. We do recommend one particular condition with approval of this, and...
Light buffers? Is that what you called them?
Yeah, I'm sorry, the, trying to find it here. The condition is specifically, "A photometric lighting plan should be submitted demonstrating that exterior lighting is fully shielded and designed to prevent glare or spillover onto adjacent, single-family residential properties." Now, this developed property is already developed. But in order to get a business tax receipt from the city, they will need to adhere to these conditions prior to approval of that, if this is approved. So, if you see on page 434 of your packet, you'll see the concept plan that will govern this property if this conditional use permit is approved. It shows, it demonstrates or illustrates compliance with the landscape buffer requirements as far as dimensions, the location, the special condition related to the location of the playground area in relation to adjacent, single-family, which has to be more than 50 feet away. And the, prior to approval or issuance of the business tax receipt, allowing the property to be utilized for this daycare, they'll have to adhere to these conditions. Page 436, you'll see an aerial that kind of illustrates where this is located in relation to the single-family. With that, I'll try to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. Sir?
Okay, first, I want to thank my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, for allowing me to speak. That's something to give applause to, right? Anybody? Because he loves everybody in here. And maybe contrary to everybody, or some of you all, he even loves our mayor. And so, my name is Darren Williams. Quick reason why I'm here, first of all, it's the first time in 35 years that I've been here. Tom Mariani was the mayor. And I was 19-year-old project kid from Robbins Avenue, Kennedy Manor, that turned his life around and went back and graduated from school. He called me here and gave me the keys to the city. Stacy Lincoln, my classmate, who we both flunked a couple of times, sorry, Bob, but we did, and we got out. So, that's, I've also had the privilege to work with Ms. Jo Lynn Nelson with kids about 15 years of my life. You were state attorney and I was with STEPS at the time. So, today, I'm here for personal reasons and for the city. There's a young woman, my beautiful wife, there she gave birth to a young daughter of our many children nine years ago, and we didn't have a place to take her. She has what's called tetralogy of Flop. And she had a very severe case, I tried to cram it all in in three minutes. She has a very severe case where she's had three open-heart surgeries. Just very complex. So, working and my wife working for the schoolboy, it's just difficult for us to really try to stay consistent with leaving her anywhere, taking her anywhere. But the young lady back there, Ms. Lakeisha, she took our daughter in and she'll tell you. You know, I can cry if I tell the whole story, I really don't want to get too deep into it. But she was there, our daughter's nine years old, she's cared for her from an infant. Whether she would turn blue, she just, she just always, that facility that she's done in on this journey meant a lot. And this is the new generation of people that are going to be able to help Titusville establish these younger generations. And we're a dose, I'm 53, we're all kind of up there, we'll quarrel all day, right, Mr. Johnson? But, okay, but we have to, this is for these young kids. I ask the favor of God through all you, just approve this building and give this young lady the opportunity to make a real impact on Titusville, Florida. Okay, somebody has to have a shot at one of these big buildings. It's a lot of aside going on in Titusville with these big buildings. We could talk to fake numbers and all that stuff. This is real life, reality. Our daughter could have died so many times, and this young lady kept her with staples with, just... We don't trust nobody with our daughter. I'm shaking to get home now because we just, you know, with her condition, but Lakeisha, we thank you, okay? You get this building.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you. City clerk?
Michelle, and it's, I'm not gonna pronounce the last name, it's I am, okay.
Good evening. I'm a little nervous, so be patient with me. I'm here to ask you guys for your approval tonight for the building on 5195 Washington Avenue. As my husband said before, we have a daughter that's there already. We actually have three daughters that are there. Or at the facility where she is, but we would like to get this approved so that she can get into this building. I really do appreciate the work that she has done so far with our children. I would like for that to continue. Also, having a 24-hour daycare or daycare in at all would benefit not only us as parents, but the city of Titusville. I don't believe that in Titusville or Brevard County, I believe, I haven't done my research, so don't take it to heart, but I don't think there's a 24-hour, there's at least not one around here. So, for parents that have those schedules that aren't just nine to five, that would need someone to take care of their children in the evening hours, I believe that this would help those parents to do and to take care of their families by offering the childcare that they would need. So, again, I just really ask that you approve this so that we can offer that service to your children as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. City clerk?
Carolyn Wood?
I know Ms. Brown for, ooh, I'm about to cry. Many years, a single mom. Amazing, amazing young men she raised. I can't tell you how much she does for the community. It's an honor and a privilege to know her and to be standing here right now. And thank you, hello, council. My name's Carolyn, and I'm speaking on behalf of Ms. Lakeisha Brown. She is a dedicated childcare provider. She's a passionate advocate for the families in the community. She's run a successful daycare for as long as I've known her. She's been a lifeline to many working parents. Recently, she's found herself in a situation where she's had to relocate. She found this amazing building. It's perfect. It's so perfect. It was zoned for a daycare before, was never used for one, and then apparently got rezoned, is my understanding. And we need to get it back to a daycare because she belongs there. She's seeking the approval to restore the building, to use it for the daycare so that she can continue to serve the families that depend on her. It's not just a daycare, it's a, as it was mentioned, she's creating a 24-hour care facility, and that is desperately needed. We don't have that in this area. There's a lot of parents who work overnight shifts, the nurses, emergency responders, single parents that have few options, you know? So, and she's not doing it for profit, it's for a purpose. Honestly, that's who she is. As long as I've known her, she takes from herself and gives to others. She did a school supply drive, paid for everything, what, almost 500 backpacks she gave out. Supplies, hundreds and hundreds of kids, and I watched it happen, and I didn't help her pay for that, she did it. She's just an amazing woman, and she needs a break. This is the perfect building for her, and it'll help so many people in Titusville. I'm just here to ask you to please give her that. Thank you.
Thank you. City clerk?
Dean Moxley?
City clerk, how many more cards do we have on this?
Seven.
Would it be fair to say everybody's in support of it? Yeah, seems about that.
Yes, it looks, we have all in support and then one neither.
Sorry, I have a broken hip, so that's why it's taken a while. Some years ago, Lakeisha asked me to run a soccer program for the daycare she had for her four sons and for my two grandsons and then for everyone else. How did I get involved in soccer? That was my nighttime job, I guess. 22 years, I coached astronaut varsity, Titusville varsity. Coached a lot of soccers. What I did, I had all these children come, and I aided them learning the game of soccer, the skills of soccer, and it was all because she wanted to make a contribution to the community. So, she used me. She asked me to help her get a new facility so that she can do what she's always done, the right thing. So, I speak on behalf of her, and I think she would make a contribution to the community because I've witnessed it. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Can I say one thing?
Member Nelson?
Can I say one thing? It feels like old home week. You're looking good, Judge.
Well, I, when he said he was teaching the kids playing soccer, I thought that's how he broke his hip, so...
He might have.
No, be careful out there, those soccer kids are rough.
I was watching a football game, I had a step down, and I had tea in my hand, and he removed it on the hand, it was a good feed, it was a good play, I fell, both my hands, I can't remember what the game was.
Thank you, sir. City Clerk?
L.D. Bryant.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and the council. I met Ms. Brown about two and a half months ago. I was actually on my way to Cocoa, and we stopped in her facility, and by me being a pastor, I was truly impressed what she's doing in that facility. The Bible said, "Try the Spirit by the Spirit." And I spent time with her, my wife and I spent time with her, and she showed me the amazing things that she's doing in that place. You guys have to pass it. Not only that, economic growth, jobs are being created, families have been saved, children are being protected and trained, children are being taught the right way. She's a caring and loving lady, you know, you and I spoke about economic growth, that's a part of it. If we can start right here, you know, we can expand the community. It takes a village to raise a family. She's a part of that village, so please, I humbly ask you guys to act and pass it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. City Clerk?
Rondale Henderson. Rondale Henderson.
Good evening. Rondale Henderson, I'm here to pretty much implore you, the council members, to go ahead and approve the 24-hour daycare for Ms. Brown. I've been going to her daycare since 2015 when I moved here, I only had one kid at that time. Since then, I've had two more, and she's known my kids since infancy, since birth, pretty much. My kids have been going there for all their lives, they're 10, nine, and seven now, and this will be a good help, especially right now. My work schedule is not always within the hours of operation for normal daycares, so a 24-hour schedule would be a help to not just myself, but to everyone else who works overnight, works early morning, different types of shifts. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you.
Jared? Jared?
Good evening, good evening. My name is Jared, I've been in Titusville probably for three years, four years now. Went through terrible divorce, got my kids two years ago, and their mom moved away. I had nowhere to take them at the divorce, as everybody knows, we had to come off a lot of money, so, found this, I work in a barber shop, Extreme Barber Lounge, found Ms. Keisha, everybody talked, you know, highly of her, what she was doing. When I found out, you know, that she had a place, went and talked to her, told her about my situation, she had no problem, you know, giving me a couple weeks, couple months, you know, when I was behind. It was sometimes I didn't want to take my kids because I didn't want to pay, you know what I mean? She, "Don't do that, bring the kids, they need to learn, they need to be here." So, she gave me a chance, asked you all to keep her open and let her, you know, give her a chance to keep us all in business, because if she closes, don't get a chance, then we all have to figure something out, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Tommy Hicks.
Tommy Hicks Jr., I'm here in full support of the approval for a conditional use permit number 1-2025. For the sake of time, to allow the other parents to speak, but I've just been a witness to everything that they're speaking about, and mainly, outside of the requirements, she goes above and beyond as far as her love and her passion and care for the children. So, in order for that to continue to grow, for the family, the children, and just the community as a whole to be impacted in a positive way, this approval would definitely benefit everyone involved, so I humbly ask that you will approve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lakeisha Brown.
You had a thought on a card, but you can talk, you don't have to talk? I mean, because I know you didn't want to talk earlier, so I'll just, you know, let you know you didn't have to, just because she called your name.
Thank you. The only thing that I, thank everyone who spoke highly of me, first off. I'm very humbled, very, and I'm going to keep moving because I don't want to get emotional, but, um, it's been a long journey. It's been a very long journey for me, and they said, "I'm here for the community, all I want to do is help these children." And the only thing that I see that was an issue was the lighting, correct? And I really don't know what a photometric, how to get there, how to obtain that, what I'm supposed to do, all I do know is because it's going to be 24 hours, and the way that the building is set up, the parents are going to be going in the front of the building, there's light all the way around that facility, so, and the neighborhood is in the back, so there would not be any use of the light in the back, we need it all in the front. So if we can get past that biometric, or somebody can direct me on how to get that, obtain that, I have no problem doing it, but again, I just didn't see a use for it if we're not going to use that, the light in the back, because at night, children will be inside the building, six, seven o'clock in the evening, there will be no reason for the light. So I don't, I don't know how to go around it or what to do, but if I can get some guidance in that, I would, I would definitely oblige if I had to turn the lights on in the back.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Is there any, any other cards?
The last card is Stan Johnston.
Do we want to let Brad answer?
Well, let's just get through the public comment, and then we'll go into the discussion. Mr. Johnson?
Okay. They say, what you, what you say in Las, in Las Vegas stays in Las Vegas, and that's what I want to happen here. I, I'm the grandparent of, of some grandchildren, and their parents, one of which is my, our sibling, it, both of the parents are working, and, so don't tell them this, but I get in big trouble when I say some things, and what I say is that, what's going to happen if Gigi can't take care of the kids? Gigi is my wife. And that starts a huge discussion, well, it's not a discussion, they want to kill me. So, so I'm looking forward to 24-hour, because there's other people that, you know, they have the both parents working, and if you don't have somebody to take care of the kids, what the heck do you do? So, we have that problem, and, thank you, Mrs. Brown, for offering a solution, because I want to live longer, and in order to do that, I'd like to get along with some of my family members. So, so I'm also going to get, read to you what I wrote here on my credentials, which you don't want to hear, but I wrote this out, and I sent it to you, May the 21st. It says, "Me, 79-years-old, veteran in family of more than a dozen veterans, Talbada Pie Engineering Honorary Society, tested approved by the state in both civil and mechanical engineering, former president ASC Cape Penhamford Branch, resident of city for over 53 years, engineer of record more than a dozen subdivisions in city area, former PE and PLS, as Lance ranked, employee retired with a pension, retired by the city, with a pension in 2008, discovered city's more serious misconduct and corruption beginning in 2012, violated in 2019 by city's $70,000 fraud that continues to discredit, and to, I can't even read it, discredit, okay. Titusville Police Department have harassed me at work, at public meetings, at my home, and at my church, tooth-shaking surprise assaults from behind without warning by armed TPD, then screamed in my face, no reason given except, 'Shut your pie hole and don't disrespect our city manager.'" Armed TPD have, have also harassed Stell Bailey, CEO of Fight for Zero, at her home outside of city limits, she now receives death threats. In October 2023, falsely arrested in jail by TPD in violation of my rights, as per FS471.027 while sampling an apparent sewage spill, lost sleep, violent nightmares, murder, murder by the TPD, and I'm the only one of more than 40,000 professional engineers licensed by the state.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
May I have an extra time?
I failed to see how your credentials were a part of the CUP, but I appreciate you trying.
It's cross our judicial, it's cross our judicial. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. All right, so, don't cards, correct? All right, now we'll get into the discussion portion of our thing. Mr. Brad, Ms. Stokel, you have the floor.
Yes, and this might be for Brad. My two things were, I want, it's, it sounds like reading the emails and then listening to everyone that spoke, we want to make this happen, I want to just clarify, it sounds like everyone's in agreement with the 10-foot landscape buffer, that was an issue I saw got brought up, and then the second main issue is the lighting. And so I do want to make sure with the applicant that it's clear on, what are we doing to make sure that we're protecting the surrounding areas from potential lighting that could be happening at nighttime, and then also making sure that we're not putting too much burden on the applicant to do something that's not necessary.
If you take a look at page 434 of your packet, you'll see the concept plan, that if this is approved, this will be what would be governing on this property. So you can see, it's already developed, this is not new site construction, so the issue is, how can they utilize this property, and what processes will they have to go through in order to get it approved? This permit is approved, the next step, in order to hear and implement what's required on this concept plan, is the landscaping. There's a 10-foot landscape buffer requirement, they'll have to provide to us at the very minimum, a Class 1 site development permit that shows the landscaping as proposed, how it could be irrigated and planted. That same Class 1 permit can be utilized, or a separate one utilized, in order to submit the photometric plan. Now, if they don't want to use or propose lighting for the entire site, they can propose something for a portion of the site. The purpose of the lighting condition is that, when we look at the code, it says, basically that the purpose of the article of lighting is to provide minimum standards for site lighting improvements, the intent is to allow lighting within parking lots, security areas, walkways, and site features while protecting neighboring properties from intrusive lighting projections. So those areas, which this is going to be 24 hours, there's portions of the property outside that are going to be utilized for parking and for other activities, potentially, like any other commercial property that's going to have uses beyond 6:00 PM or beyond the evening hours. So there'll be some kind of lighting requirement. We were concerned that because it's going to be 24 hours, that we wanted to introduce a condition to address that specifically, that this would be something that would be required, since again, this is not a new site construction, they're just utilizing an existing property. So they will have to provide to us at the very minimum, a Class 1 permit that shows a photometric plan, and typically, that's an engineer that provides that. They want to propose something that's just a portion of the property, we can, I believe the council can, can limit the condition, or not approve the condition.
Can you clarify what this photometric lighting plan means exactly for the applicant, just so, in that we're clear on what we would potentially be approving?
So all the lighting you see in a parking lot, those poles, lighting around the building, all of that is identified on a photometric plan, and there's foot candles that are identified, so it tells us how much light radiates from those light fixtures throughout the property, and then it shows us how much bleed there might be of lighting onto adjacent properties. So one thing we were concerned about was that they were going to have 24-hour activity, lighting on this property, that could bleed onto the adjacent properties that are single family. So that could be mitigated with the landscape buffer, it could also be mitigated with a photometric plan that shows us where that bleeding is happening, or not bleeding, and so an engineer will be able to determine that for us.
So if we were to approve this, it says plan, so you would work with the applicant to make sure that there's enough lighting for safety and security reasons, but also making sure we're not being intrusive on the surrounding area?
Correct.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Thank you, Member Stokel, and Brad, if I heard you correctly, that means the applicant would have to hire an engineer and go through this process, correct?
Typically, a specialist, we see that signed, signed by engineers, we see other lighting specialists, but that is something we typically receive as part of any site development permit. In this case, we're only asking for that particular item, and then a landscape plan.
Yeah, and I don't know how the rest of council feels, but I personally believe that we shouldn't oppose any more requirements on this person who's trying to just open up for business, it's own commercial, it's right on US1, you know, I think we, we need to get them open for business. I was actually asked today if this is the first one in, like, the state, and I couldn't answer that. Maybe the county, but I don't think the state, there's probably other more dense areas that have something like this, but a much-needed service, and I appreciate what you're doing and trying to open up a business here in Titusville. I know it's a tough process, but we're working on the process, so with that being said, I just wanted to let you all know how, how I felt about it, but, Member Nelson?
Well, I sort of feel like we also have to protect neighbors. So, question, Brad, you said we could limit the lighting condition. What would you suggest?
So the applicant has, has already testified that they are not going to utilize the areas behind the building, so if they are still going to be required to provide to us a photometric plan, then maybe it could be limited to what they're proposing, and that is in front of the building. And if that is not necessary to you, then, because the purpose of our recommendation is to make sure there's not bleed going on to the adjacent property.
Okay. That sounds much easier to do.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Well, I, I definitely agree with what the mayor has said, and the building already has existing lights around it, doesn't it? So they're, they're not adding lights, are they?
We don't have other, our information to show, because sometimes sites are, are constructed, and the operation is not going to be after hours, they're not required to provide to us a lighting plan. So this particular property may have...
Yeah, after hours, but they won't be using the lights in the back anyway, after the hours, right? Okay.
That's what the applicant has stated.
Yeah, okay.
All right, seeing no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd be happy to do this. Move to approve conditional use permit 1-2025 for 51, I hope that's 95 South Washington Avenue, with the limited condition of the lighting plan for the front of the building, with the understanding condition that the back would not be using lights overnight.
Second?
I have a motion, and I have a second.
What do you need to clarify?
I just need to get clarification, so your motion is that they're not going to be utilizing the areas in the back? That's why there's not a requirement?
At night.
At night.
At night, okay.
Right.
All right, so I have a motion, and I have a second, we're all on the same page, I believe. Any further discussion? City Clerk, call the rule.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Moscoso?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you very much. I, I think the round of applause goes to the applicant there, I think she deserves it, so.
After all the, after all the members came up and spoke, I would look for a halo when you walked up.
I, I get it, I was, I was in my house all weekend with just my two-year-old, and that was just anarchy, so, mom was out of town. All right, let's move on to old business, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, sir. So we have no ordinance, it's first reading, 11A is native plantings, canopy, and CRZ, and the recommended action is to provide direction to community development, or whether to advertise the ordinances, and schedule public hearings, and Brad Parrish can answer any questions.
All right.
And he has a short presentation.
Brad, can you hold on a second? Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes, I, I noticed in the write-up that the TEC has asked for a special workshop between the commission and the staff, and I would move that we let that happen, and we defer this item until after they have met. That would be a motion that I would like to...
Motion to table.
Motion to table this item, to give the TEC an opportunity to have a special workshop with commission.
So the TEC was specifically asking about one particular ordinance, not all three?
Okay.
So is that?
Yes.
Just, just the one ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. I will explain a little bit about that in this, because it is tied to the other, to another ordinance.
One second, let me... There's a motion on the table. Is there a second?
A second with discussion?
Yeah, that's fine. You second for discussion.
Okay. I I agree with Brad. There seem to be all interrelated, so I would like to have a workshop covering all three.
Yes, I agree.
The council have a workshop, or the?
T E C.
T E C.
I just have a motion, and I have a second. Is there any further discussion on the matter? Member Nelson?
Did you have a question?
Yeah, the part of the reason why we're bringing this to you is because I we have brought this to T E C at various times.
What I was envisioning, and as member calls motion, but what I was envisioning is that we have a workshop, I don't know, maybe T E C members, people coming in from outside, sort of like we did with the tree ordinance, where people are having discussions about what needed to go in there, what needed to be changed.
I'm a little confused. Are you so this is strictly with T E C., or does this include council with T E C?
No, just.
Just T E C.
Just T E C only? Okay. So, a separate meeting from the regular meetings?
Yes.
So, again, motion, second. Member Nelson, are you done with your? Okay. Member Stokel?
Yes, so to clarify, just to make sure I know what I'm voting on. This is on our agenda. I believe T E C had initially requested ordinances to be drafted. We gave the okay. I know Brad and staff have worked on these ordinances. I would venture to say staff probably doesn't feel comfortable with the way the ordinances are written right now. There's some issues, and I think that's kind of where I'm coming from. And I remember back when we had the tree ordinance. To me, I feel like are the workshop. It would be nice to, I think, I don't know what T E C's view is on these ordinances as they're written, if they are saying, yes, these are great, and staff is saying, no, these aren't. I there's I I think we need to have some workshop to kind of work through some of those things. Yeah, so it's I don't feel comfortable advertising these right now. I will tell you that. So, I don't know what that looks like going forward if it's that workshop, but I think there's some things that maybe need to be worked out. I appreciated even our presentation earlier when they said tree canopy is the one of the best things you can do. So, I'm like, I'm interested in that portion specifically, and so I don't I don't know if you feel want to share what you've already done with staff. I know you guys have put a lot of time into this already.
The other thing I was going to present to you was really just that staff has no direction either way. What we needed to do was present to you what was directed by by you, what T E C requested, what we came up with based on the actions that you've and other directions you've made and other policies. And then we also wanted to just show you like the pros and cons of each of these actions and get further direction from you as to whether these should be combined together or separate items advertised at some point or sent back to T E C., which I believe is what we're going to be doing.
So, my recommendation, I'm sorry to interject here, would be maybe we schedule that for one of our presentation meetings?
Yes.
And then, because then we have like, you know, a full hour to kind of go through it, and then we can later at that council meeting, figure out which way we want to go with it, because like like many have said, a lot of these ordinance are interconnected, and you might be trying to just do one big bill all at once, and maybe we should break these up. But again, we want to hear what you have to say as well. So, Member Nelson?
And I'm not sure if I said it right, that it should be T E C. that does workshop or staff doing a workshop. I just know you were talking, there were some emails from a landscape architect, and she had questions about it. As I was reading through it, I had questions about it, and I thought, you know, we really don't have a meeting of the mind yet.
Yeah, I feel like I like the idea of the presentation, because I I don't feel comfortable doing the workshop yet, because I don't think that's fair to do to the T E C. members without giving them better direction. So, I think once we have a presentation of the pros and cons, and I even was going to bring that up potentially with item B., is are there some cons? Are we getting people trying to develop here, and because of our landscaping requirements, you're consistently seeing issues? So, I think that information would be helpful with this discussion when we're looking at the pros and cons of these, if staff has seen any issues consistently that we don't see as council members.
So, what I'm hearing is instead of a workshop with T E C., bring this back to you during your five-thirty meeting.
Well, I'm going to entertain a motion one way or another.
There's a motion that needs to be modified.
I know.
Yep.
So, friendly amendment, would you amend your motion to instead of doing a tabling, doing a presentation with this?
I accept the friendly amendment to have it at the presentation meeting at five-thirty.
Member Nelson?
And I second what hold.
All right. Well, I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All of them. I think this is procedural.
We don't get to make any presentation.
I don't think it's procedural.
Well, we're 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 basically tabling this and having the presentation done at a presentation meeting. We're not addressing it at all tonight. So, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
We have people come from far away to speak to you.
Do you table the the data point ordinance?
Yes, it's going to be done at a presentation meeting. We're going to.
What date, time certain?
We didn't have that.
Unless you give it a time certain.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So, the motion was made to have it at a presentation meeting, so I don't have that information.
And you can't table it if you don't give it a time.
We could give it our July presentation meeting, since we are recessing in June.
Is that good with you, City Manager?
Yes, sir. We don't have a presentation meeting in June.
Sounds good. It's in July.
Which one?
It'd be the fourth Tuesday in July.
Yeah.
The second Tuesday?
Fourth.
Fourth.
Fourth. City Manager, item B.
Yes, sir. Moving on to eleven B., Development Review Process, and staff will recommend will provide an update on efforts to improve the development review process.
This is very brief. The last I brought this up a couple of times to you. If you remember, our timeframes for site development reviews were going exceeding fifty days. They have gone down to forty-two days average, and the most recent count has gone down to thirty-five days, and that's partly because of the assistance we received by filling in a new position that you helped create for us and some of the other changes that we've been making internally as far as our process. Again, we do have a couple of items or softwares that are coming up that'll continue to help reduce that timeframe, an A I. tool, a new site permit intake tool as well, which would be an online-only tool. And then also, we will come back to you with changes to the low-impact development ordinance and to our parking regulations with a draft ordinance for you to consider. With that, that's all I have. I just want to give you that update.
City Council? Member Stokel?
Yes, and again, I don't know, it might not be at this meeting, but if staff could provide any consistent themes or issues that you guys may encounter from pre-meetings that you have with potential, specifically, commercial property, I'm interested, and I don't know if council's interested in any other. But as you guys have pre-meetings with them, and then they end up not submitting a site plan, if there's anything that you guys see from those pre-meetings where they're saying, oh, thank you for your time, but this is too much of a barrier for us, those things I think that we don't see as council members, because they don't come before us. So, that would be helpful when it comes to the development review process and the item that we just tabled, when we're talking about things that we might be changing to our landscaping. That will just help me make a better informed decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Stokel. City Clerk?
One card, Stan Johnston.
This is on?
Development Review Process.
Stan Johnston, I'm a professional engineer. I've developed I've I've worked with the Development Review Committee. I believe this has to do with the development review process, and it was horrible. It was horrible. What came out of that particular those particular meetings were numerous violations by the city of Titusville, numerous, and I've sent an email about it. Oh, my God, I can't believe it. Plus, they just just it's just not working. I mean, right now, I've sent to everybody here and over here, the city, you two guys, and it's about a Mockingbird Lane in a new development called Salsa and Jay Oaks. Are you listening, Ms. Sarah? Dr. Stara? No, Dr. Stokel's not listening. You see that? She should be listening. Dr. Stokel, hey, wake up! She's not. She's got something in her ears. I can't believe that. So, she's doing her homework right now while I'm talking about an important issue of an eight-foot-wide. So, this is what we have.
Mr. Johnson, please stay away from the personal text and just say peace.
Okay, so, I didn't want to I'm sorry for disturbing somebody's homework. So, anyhow, this is a serious matter, which right now is that you have a design that prohibits people from going to their house. You have a design that of what was a two-way Mockingbird Lane, and the engineer of record in the city proclaimed in twenty-twenty-one that Mockingbird Lane is not going to be on the survey, is not going to be on the site plan, and is not going to be on the preliminary plan. That's highly illegal. It's a postal address. Eleven fifty-five Mockingbird Lane now has no legal access as per the city of Titusville. And you should be checking on it. So should Sheriff Stokel's doing her homework, but she's very busy. She's making.
Mr. Johnson?
Sorry, I'm sorry. I apologize. So, anyhow, the Development Review Committee would not respond to my questions in saying is that this is all illegal, what they've done and what they're doing and what they have on the plans. And you don't you guys, neither the city manager, the city attorney's office, they do not respond. It's highly illegal what's going on. A one-way, a two-way access turned into a one-way access, no turnaround, which did have used to have a turnaround. I can't believe it. So, anyhow, I listed to you about forty-five redlined areas on sheet number four that are illegal and that you guys approved and do nothing about it for over three years. No, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. City Clerk?
No.
Brad, I would just like to say I appreciate your your work in getting those site plan review times down. It is very, very important that we get, you know, businesses up and running, and I know it's a tough task when you look at all the ordinances you have to deal with, right? It's it's pretty impressive, so thank you very much. Any other comments from council? See and none? City Manager?
Yes, sir. Moving on to eleven C., as recall, in the earlier meeting, we had a presentation by the Flash vote staff, and the staff has prepared a first sample or first survey instrument that we would like to get your approval to send out. The contract calls for a total of six over a one-year period, and we can space them out however you want. We would be looking for additional topics that staff would or that council would like us to address, but we just wanted to get now that we have sufficient people signed up for it, we'd like to get that first survey out, and we thought it'd be appropriate to use that Harrison Street parcel that we bought as part of the Riverfront Acquisition as a first survey instrument to see what the, you know, citizens of Titusville would like to see done with that parcel. So, we're looking for your approval to use the survey instrument.
Thank you, City Manager. City Clerk?
Casey Knowledge. Casey.
City Clerk?
Kathleen O'Rourke.
Okay, as you know, I am a professor of epidemiology and biostatistics. I might have a little training in this area, and this survey is a total waste of your time. And the reason why it is, and I spoke specifically to the individuals doing it, people are being invited in a general email, but it is their own choice to decide whether or not they will participate in the study. That is known as volunteer bias or self-selection bias, because the people are making the decision, and it is not based on being a random sample of any population, and it doesn't matter that they look at how they look at. There's a real difference between people who volunteer to be in a survey and those who don't. Some of the differences, I put them out here for you, is volunteers could have some agenda on their own, so they are coming in and they're not representing their neighbors. The results are not generalizable. That is one of the most important things when you do a survey. Doesn't mean anything for future research. You've got such a bad sample here that doing this is a total waste of time and resources. And I had talked to Herman Cole about it and said, if you really want it, if you really want a decent survey and you want it to be representative, the really way that one would do that is to identify the list of all the voters, pick people from that list, individually ask them to participate, and give them some type of incentive money usually to do so. You're probably paying a fair amount of money for this useless survey, and I just think it's doing no good for anybody anytime. Can make you sound good, but you're going to have results that are totally meaningless. And if I had a student who proposed this, I would say, no way. Find another alternative.
Thank you. City Clerk?
Tony Shifflin.
Despite the flawed methodology, the actual survey itself is bad. Laura Ward was here earlier, but she couldn't outwait all of this other stuff, and she left me her notes. Question one does not include Riverfront Park, which twenty years ago, the Riverfront Referendum people struggled long and hard to to get, and so it's not even on your list up here. Question number one. And question number three, all the things that you're listing, the amenities at the new park, you know, when you ask a survey question, you can really guide and manipulate the results by the way you ask the question. And putting these things here for this beautiful piece of property, there's nothing on here that the Riverfront Referendum people twenty years ago proposed for this piece of property, this particular piece of property, Ms. Stokel. I wish you would pay attention to the people that are speaking out here, but twenty years ago, they wanted it to be covered with trees. Imagine that. So, Ms. Ward says question number three should have as one of the things it does say, leave as in a natural state with additional trees and a restored natural living shoreline. Those are her hopes. The the Kemble Horn thing that was presented to y'all, first of all, was just really disgusting. Pave it pave most of it's paved. A dock out there? Have you gone and seen this property? It's nestled in between seawalls. So, actually, what I suggest is beyond fixing the survey and getting real, real items in question number three for people to change to choose from, pick up to three, I suggest we do nothing with this beautiful piece of undeveloped property with a natural shoreline and a tremendous view across the Indian River Lagoon to the Space Center, Mr. Cole. Objective, the city's comprehensive plan has a section on shoreline mixed-use goals and objectives in the future land use element. Objective one point twelve, shoreline mixed-use lays out two main goals, to preserve and enhance the visual and functional use of land along the Indian River Lagoon east of Highway One while providing public access. This lot left is just as it is right now, does that. It provides public access, and it's preserved and enhanced. It has a natural shoreline. I request that the shoreline be protected, not hardened, and be maintained in a natural state. And and if you've got to do something in this park, perhaps install some educational projects such as some mangrove plantings or seagrass. My suggestion is to, oh, let me let me just do this one thing for for Vice Mayor Cole. Let's make a gateway to the stars. Build a walkway to the moon.
City Clerk?
The last card is Stan Johnston.
Stan?
Okay, I can't follow it up. I don't think y'all y'all want to hear kumbaya? Probably not. Okay. This this Kathleen O'Rourke, I think something like that's her name.
That's right.
Yeah, well, something like that, and she brings the truth to us and so forth like that, and she questions the city. I think she's a troublemaker. And really, no, really, I think and deal like what like you dealt with me, I think you should arrest her. And we, no, really, really, you should should arrest. And we, no, really, really, you should arrest her and take her and put her for questioning, and just like me, questioning another, I signed papers and so forth like that, interrogating and so forth like that. All that information disappeared. Of course, they didn't like, because they didn't like what happened. Anyhow, so then they put me in jail, and they didn't tell me what they, you don't have to, you don't have to tell her what she's arrested for. Just do her like me. Put her in jail and so forth, and don't give her any medications. If she has life-sustaining medic-
Mr. Johnson, we're talking about the survey.
That's what the city of Titusville did to me. Don't give her the medication she needs to survive. Don't do that.
We're talking about the survey.
Well, I'm talking about her. What do you think she did? Did you hear what she said?
I did.
She defied. My golly, she said, the truth is that, she said, it's nonsense. How can you allow her to do that? That's what, the thing is, that's what you've done to me. I mean, you don't answer my questions, closed doors and so forth. Anyhow, so she's a troublemaker. You know what to do with her, okay? Don't do it to her right now. Do it when she's not looking.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. City Clerk? All right. All right. Member Nelson?
What?
Order, please.
Dr. O'Rourke may be a troublemaker, but she's also right. And no, you're not going to jail, but there are problems with this survey, and if we do it, we need to recognize that there are problems with it. So I agree with Tony. We need to put Riverfront Park in here, and I would say, question two, or question three, leave it in a natural state. It does need some work. There are some invasives in there that need to come out. Maybe add plant trees, plant additional trees, manage park, get rid of the invasives. So it does need some work, but we have to realize that it's, the whole idea was, we were doing a meeting on Saturday morning, and we were getting the same 20, 30 people. So we have to realize that this is not going to be perfect, and we can do it, but it's not going to be perfect.
Thank you, Member Nelson. I remember from the early part of the presentation, while they do have a bunch of people register, they do randomly sample that panel, and then they also do invite people off the voter rolls. So, you know, hopefully that'll alleviate some of that, but, you know, again, no survey's perfect, because the first rule of survey is everybody has to volunteer for it. Everybody has to consent. Can't mandate surveys, unfortunately. Member Moscoso?
Sure. I would just say on question number two, for the top reasons, you and your family visit parks, one that is left off is exercise, walking, or jogging, which surprised me, because that's a quite common one. So I would ask if we could at least add that one to the list.
Can I get a universal yes from everybody on that? Yeah. Okay. It's common sense. Thank you. Member Moscoso? Any other comments from council? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Member Nelson?
So I'd move to approve the flash vote public input survey with the corrections additions, I guess I would say, that we've added.
Second.
All right, so I have a motion, and I have a second, and just re-clearifying the motion, the corrections that were added were listing the parks that were omitted and exercise to the reasons why, correct?
Correct. And adding under Q3, something to the effect of adding trees, additional trees, and getting rid of the invasives.
Okay, so you would, you agree to amend the first point to leave in natural state and add additional trees with removing invasive plants?
I would do it as another bullet point.
Okay.
Give order, we can't hear you back here.
All right.
Is it just me? Oh, really?
Thank you. Thank you. We got the point. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Kay.
So the motion, or the addition was to add another bullet point, add another bullet point under Q3, asking for additional trees, and that we get rid of the invasives that are there.
All right, so I have a motion for Member Nelson, I believe.
I second, and I accept the amendment.
Any further discussion from council? Sarah, did you have something?
Yeah, so I just want to further clarify. Q1, add Riverfront Park. Q2, add exercise/walking/jogging. Q3, add a bullet that says, add the trees. I almost feel like if we're going to do that, you might need to say, add trees with no additional amenities, so it's clear that it will stay in a natural state. It's not adding trees and then having a path and all that stuff, because I feel like that is a little misleading, and we won't, I won't know when people are voting for that, if that's truly voting for leaving it there for nobody to go to, and it stays in a natural state with improvements, or they want trees, but they also want to come and park and walk it.
I was just looking, it said we can choose up to three. So leave in a natural state, you could add, you could say playground, add trees, get rid of the invasives.
Okay, no, that's, that's a fair, that's a fair point. Okay, then I'm fine with that one.
Okay. So I have a friendly motion amendment that's been accepted by both parties. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, city manager.
Sir. Moving on to new business, we have one item, and that is Odyssey Ridge Final Platte. And the recommended action is to approve the final platte covenants and bonds for Odyssey Ridge subdivision located north of Timber Trace Apartments on Sisson Road, and this is a quasi-judicial item.
Mr. Parrish?
The staff reviewed the final platte for consistency with the comprehensive plan, land development regulations, and recommends approval. The staff also reviewed the covenants and performance bonds and recommends acceptance, and the mylar for the final platte is here.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. City Clerk, any cards?
Ms. Lavuda, I believe is her name.
Good evening. My name's Genevieve Lavuda. I'm actually the applicant for the final platte application, so I was just here in case you do have any questions or comments.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Last card is Stan Johnston.
My name is Stan Johnston, and you're not going to like to hear what I have to say. You're not going to like it at all. And although I'm not going to disturb her, because she's doing her homework right now. Okay? So I sent you an email. Jim, you want to listen to this? It says, it's titled, "Mayday, Mayday, SOS." You know, that means something. That's pretty serious. That's coming from a veteran, Navy veteran. "City obliterates Mockingbird Lane, approves a new traffic path into a fence post and oak tree. Now establishes no legal access to 1155 Mockingbird Lane House."
Mr. Johnson, I don't think that has anything to do with Odyssey Ridge.
That is a preliminary platte.
We're talking about Odyssey Ridge.
I know. So I'm giving you, look what I'm going to say. I'm going to tell you something you don't want to hear. They don't know what they're doing. I'm looking at a preliminary platte that's got all kinds of errors on it, approved by the city of Titusville. The survey is wrong. Can't believe they'd do it. There's no name for Mockingbird Lane. You should listen to this. I sent you an email on this. It says the preliminary platte, the plans, and the survey was approved, and yet the survey was disapproved by the state board. The survey is known to be incorrect by three foot with error in the right of way, and yet the city of Titusville approves it. How can we trust our staff to approve Odyssey Ridge with this kind of errors, omissions? You guys don't know what you're doing. I'm a registered, okay, this is a quasi-judicial. Understand, he said that's a quasi-judicial. Understand is that how many subdivisions have I done in the city of Titusville? This is a subdivision. You're going to apply. How many have I done? Over a dozen. I can't believe what you're doing now. It's like the staff here has disappeared. It's not like the staff it was before. I cannot believe this has happened. You cannot accept, legally accept, a site plan with a survey that's illegal, but the city of Titusville does. The only, the only city in the world that sprays women, children, you know, that, that stuff. You don't want to hear that.
Mr. Johnson, what is your assessment on Odyssey Ridge?
I'm going to say is that you need to have staff that knows what they're doing to review the plattes. You cannot, how can you possibly get anything truthful and valid with this kind of nonsense going on with this other platte? You're not listening. I'm sorry, but you guys are doing wrong things. No breaking. And I'm not interrupting her work. She's, she's doing very good work now. She'll get an A in class. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. City Clerk, any other cards? All right. Quasi-judicial, public hearing closed. Member Nelson?
Move to approve the final platte covenants and bond for Odyssey Ridge subdivision.
Second.
I have a motion. I have a second. Any further council discussion? Seeing none. City Clerk?
Mayor, sorry, Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Moscoso?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Motion carries. Thank you very much. And we're going to take a 10-minute recess. All right, we're going to get up and running again. Appreciate your patience. City manager, I believe we have petitions and requests from the public non-agenda items. Looks like we have our first speaker.
You do indeed. All right. I actually came here with two important procedural issues to bring up, but I think we now have three, because before I discuss those, I want to say that moving petitions and requests to the end of the agenda is incredibly disrespectful of the citizens. People make an effort to come here, and those who voted for you need to know the people who made this decision, because it was inexcusable. But moving on, the first thing I had wanted to talk to about was Herman Cole's request to pause the search for a city manager, and after completing a few token steps, appoint Mr. Abadi to the position. Nothing personal to Mr. Abadi, actually, he's much better than his predecessor, but that was kind of a low bar. But this proposal is incredibly inappropriate, and quite honestly, if you don't want to risk an additional lawsuit, it needs to be dropped immediately. Individuals applied for this position under the search criteria could be greatly harmed by this move. Now, it might have been a few years since you've applied for positions, but you could easily have an applicant who- It's not really supporting any life, any pollinators. The only thing that it's better than is astroturf. It's, as a land care company will explain, lawn is very cheap to mow, cheap to maintain, but that's not really true. These big lawn areas require extensive irrigation, as you well know, systems that can cost up to $100,000 or more. Frequent maintenance of these irrigation systems, harmful fertilizers, and a lot of chemicals, zero value to wildlife. So our transition plan involved reducing the lawn to cover only the practical turf areas. We increased in its place, we, we planted shrubs and trees, and we removed or disabled large areas of irrigation. So we're now 20 years later than the original install of this, of this property. So my recommendation is in your landscape plan to limit, limit turf areas to those practical turf areas, and a goal of being about 25% of the land. I think I'm going to run out of time, but I'll just go for a couple more seconds. The shrub layer is really the workhorse of your landscape. There's so much potential there to support our native wildlife and birds and everything. So when I come back next time, I will talk more about that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, counsel, for allowing me to speak. My name is David Turkott. I live in Merritt Island. But last fall, I joined the Sea Rocket Chapter of the Native Plant Society here in Titusville. And I have a graduate degree, a master of science in soil science, and very, I worked for the Natural Resources Conservation Service, so very much in tune with native habitats. And native plants, these are plants that were here before we came along, Europeans came along and colonized, conquered the country, and they, they were here, they're here naturally. They complement the fauna. A lot of native animals depend on native plants, and you're working with nature by planting, and I'm vehemently opposed to the artificial turf. It's very short-sighted. There's no biological benefits to it. So I'm, and I wasn't even aware that I was on the agenda tonight, because I would have signed up to speak on that had I known. But the, and there's economic advantages in native plants. You're working with nature. I volunteer at Sam's House, and I'm working on a plant inventory there. There's been some plant inventories, and there's 201 native plants that have been observed on the Pine Island Conservation Area, 880 acres. That's pretty impressive. This area has a tremendous array of native plants. Why put something in that's alien that could become invasive? When, you think when they brought Brazilian pepper over, or Melaleuca, or Australian pine, they thought at the time that they were fine, you know, the, there were reasons, and sometimes they came over by accident. Invasive plants are alien plants. All native plants are supposed to be here for a reason. And if it was up to me, I would add, you know, if you could, since you have not brought you on that, I would go totally natives and, and disallow the artificial turf, absolutely. And in the long term, you know, the, you know, this region and the lagoon and the, and St. John River Valley are going to benefit from it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Case in Ounch, Maryland Avenue, Titusville Tree Team. Mark your calendars. June 18th at 10 o'clock, the Titusville Tree Team, at the request of Brevard Parks and Recreation, is having a tree planting event at the Isaac Campbell Community Center and Park, 701 South Street. And you are all invited, as well as you folks here. Come and plant a tree with the children of the Brevard, of the Isaac Campbell Community Center and Park. The 60 children of the center's summer program will be planting 30 native trees in the park, live oaks and wax myrtles, not crepe myrtles, wax myrtles, which are native tree right here, with the help of their parents, members of the community, and the Titusville Tree Team volunteers. In this way, the children will learn teamwork, persistence, and the value of trees in our community. The week before the tree planting, on June the 12th at 1:30, the naturalist Teresa Nick of the county's Environmentally Endangered Land Program, and I will provide the children a short, interactive lesson on the life cycle of oak trees and how trees improve our lives, so they will know why we are planting trees and asking them to plant trees in their park. Each year, as the children attend this summer program, they will watch these trees grow and provide more shade and beauty to their park. So, come to the Isaac Campbell Park, Wednesday, June the 18th, and bring your shovel. Now, because my time is not over, I'm going to tell you some short statements about native plants and trees. Native trees and plants require no fertilizer, which would otherwise pollute the lagoon. Native trees and plants require no irrigation, which would otherwise deplete the aquifers. Native trees and plants are adapted to local climate and soils, and thus will thrive with low maintenance. Native trees and plants provide habitat for native birds, which support tourism. Native trees and plants provide native bugs and caterpillars required by native baby birds. Native plants promote native pollinators necessary for vegetable and fruit production. Native trees and plants promote native landscape nurseries. Native trees and plants are beautiful. Native trees and plants preserve and celebrate the unique natural heritage of our region. So, go native! Adopt the native plant ordinance requiring 50% Brevard native plants in the landscaping of all new developments, and I look forward to the fourth week of July, Tuesday, where you're going to spend the whole hour with those three ordinances recommended by TEC. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Lance Fish. I'm the former deputy chief of the Palm Bay Police Department. So last week, I had an opportunity to speak with Ms. Samantha Charles. We talked about the hurdles that she's going to have to overcome to try to find the truth about her son. We talked about, as a deputy chief, the meetings that I sat into when we had officer-involved shootings in Palm Bay, and the participations and discussions that revolved with the state attorney's office, FDLE, police administration, and even the attorneys for the involved officers. These meetings were more about protecting the officers, the agency, and the system than ever acknowledging the truth. You have, you have a community that is hurting, a mother that seeks answers, good or bad. You have a police department that needs closure to mend the strain that's been caused by this unknown. So my concerns come from 25 years of law enforcement. I have concerns that the very body cameras that your citizens pay for, that are used to find the truth, that they, the very safeguard that is in place to promote that truth, the integrity and the facts, are being used to promote distrust and, and failure to provide that truth. I know from my experience that police chiefs believe that they must protect their officers and the agency above all else, above all costs, to include hiding facts, changing narratives, or simply by remaining silent. Police culture can destroy a community. A police chief that has been with an agency for 32 years, a chief that has 12, has been a chief for 12 years, has created, has created a culture, whether good or bad. To build, to build a culture takes years, to erase it even longer. If you have a chief that has no longer served the community, it's only a matter of time before you have a police department that won't either. I've been open about my, my concerns with Palm Bay. I've watched a chief there that has created a culture that has, he has disdain for the police, or for the citizens. I've seen text messages, I've done presentations where he openly disdains his citizens. I just hope it's not too late for Titusville, and that's what I had prepared. And so then I walked in here, and the first thing that this, this council did is you moved your public comments to the end. I saw, Palm Bay's already done that. Citizens, you guys, you better be worried. This council, like ours, is protecting one individual over 50,000. Our city council protected one over 150,000. We're trying to silence a population, and you can't do that. I saw nobody leave once you guys made that move. I saw nobody walk out that door, and you're still here, and I commend you for that. This is going to be a hurdle for this community. I've been fighting the fight since May 6th of last year, and I'm a, I was a former deputy chief. I was actually the deputy chief of Palm Bay at the time, and I fought the fight. I hope, counsel, that you do the right thing. I hope that you give this community closure. Ladies on the left, I commend you too. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Stan Johnston. And I talked about a, an email that I sent out, and it had some, some illegal activities. I spoke about it last time at the 5:30 meeting, and it still applies, and that is that I'm looking for explanations from Mr. Connor about his illegal activity regarding a stolen sign, and the illegal activity including post hole diggers in the right of way where you need to notify, what do you call it? Underground utilities operations. You have to, you're supposed to legally do that. I've been in situations where utilities have been only a few inches below the dirt, or even in cased in curb that should not be disturbed, instead of being 18 inches deep. They're shallow. I've, I've been in situations where it cost over $100,000 to repair fiber optics that were interrupted by someone who hadn't, who illegally dug in a place without calling for utility locates. So what you did was a serious, serious violation of law. And I talked to Mr. Rosso about that also. And so that was illegal, and also the placement of the, your size as far as your ownership of your sign, that was illegal. And then I'll, I'll just read this, this paragraph. It says, "The, the sign is what is known by many as dirty rotten politicking, as the sign deliberately misleads people to view the sign as owned by Mrs. Compton, as it has her photo in a misleading statement that she is a proud, stupid Democratic Party member." And she's, actually, she's not, she's neither, she's not a Republican, she's, doesn't have, that's an error by myself. But this is, this is disturbing, and I think maybe, maybe you, Mr. Conley, Mr. Connors, maybe you can be a candidate for mayor, not for mayor, but for city manager. And by the way, I have, I want the police officers to listen to this, is that I had to tell somebody the other day, I have no, nothing, no information, I do not know about this rumor about Chief Lau removing the information from, what do you call it, these cameras, when allegedly our city manager had cocaine. I know nothing about it. So if there's any questions about it, don't ask me, okay? That's what I had to tell the other person, okay? So keep that in mind, too.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. Hope you all, I hope you listened to that, John.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Okay.
Hi. My name is Jo Lawson, and I live at 805 Hillcrest Avenue here in Titusville. And my-
C. Thank you very much.[201.31][201.31](APPLAUSE).
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Lance Fish. I'm the former deputy chief of the Palm Bay Police Department. So last week, I had an opportunity to speak with Ms. Samantha Charles. We talked about the hurdles that she's going to have to overcome to try to find the truth about her son. We talked about, as a deputy chief, the meetings that I sat into when we had officer-involved shootings in Palm Bay, and the participations and discussions that revolved with the state attorney's office, FDLE, police administration, and even the attorneys for the involved officers. These meetings were more about protecting the officers, the agency, and the system than ever acknowledging the truth. You have a community that is hurting, a mother that seeks answers, good or bad. You have a police department that needs closure to mend the strain that's been caused by this unknown. So my concerns come from 25 years of law enforcement. I have concerns that the very body cameras that your citizens pay for, that are used to find the truth, that the very safeguard that is in place to promote that truth, the integrity and the facts, are being used to promote distrust and failure to provide that truth. I know from my experience that police chiefs believe that they must protect their officers and the agency above all else, above all costs, including hiding facts, changing narratives, or simply by remaining silent. Police culture can destroy a community. A police chief that has been with an agency for 32 years, a chief that has been a chief for 12 years, has created a culture, whether good or bad. To build a culture takes years, to erase it even longer. If you have a chief that has no longer served the community, it's only a matter of time before you have a police department that won't either.[301.02][301.02](APPLAUSE). I've been open about my concerns with Palm Bay. I've watched a chief there that has created a culture that he has disdain for the citizens. I've seen text messages, I've done presentations, where he openly disdains his citizens. I just hope it's not too late for Titusville, and that's what I had prepared. And so then I walked in here, and the first thing that this council did is you moved your public comments to the end. I saw, and Palm Bay's already done that. Citizens, you guys, you better be worried. This council, like ours, is protecting one individual over 50,000. Our city council protected one over 150,000. We're trying to silence a population, and you can't do that. I saw nobody leave once you guys made that move. I saw nobody walk out that door, and you're still here, and I commend you for that. This is going to be a hurdle for this community. I've been fighting the fight since May 6th of last year, and I was a former deputy chief. I was actually the deputy chief of Palm Bay at the time, and I fought the fight. I hope, council, that you do the right thing. I hope that you give this community closure. Ladies on the left, I commend you too. Thank you for your time.[382.15][382.15](APPLAUSE).
Thank you.
Stan Johnston. And I talked about an email that I sent out, and it had some illegal activities. I spoke about it last time at the 5:30 meeting, and it still applies, and that is that I'm looking for explanations from Mr. Connor about his illegal activity regarding a stolen sign, and the illegal activity, including post hole diggers in the right-of-way, where you need to notify, what do you call it? Underground utilities operations. You have to, you're supposed to legally do that. I've been in situations where utilities have been only a few inches below the dirt, or even cased in curb, that should not be disturbed, instead of being 18 inches deep. They're shallow. I've been in situations where it cost over $100,000 to repair fiber optics that were interrupted by someone who illegally dug in a place without calling for utility locates. So what you did was a serious violation of law, and I talked to Mr. Rosso about that also. And so that was illegal, and also the placement of your size, as far as your ownership of your sign, that was illegal. And then I'll just read this paragraph. It says, "The sign is what is known by many as dirty rotten politicking, as the sign deliberately misleads people to view the sign as owned by Mrs. Compton, as it has her photo in a misleading statement that she is a proud, stupid Democratic Party member." And she's actually, she's neither, she's not a Republican, she doesn't have, that's an error by myself. But this is disturbing, and I think maybe, maybe you, Mr. Connors, maybe you can be a candidate for mayor, not for mayor, but for city manager. And by the way, I have, I want the police officers to listen to this, is that I had to tell somebody the other day, I have no, nothing, no information, I do not know about this rumor about Chief Lau removing the information from, what do you call it, these cameras, when allegedly our city manager had cocaine. I know nothing about it. So if there's any questions about it, don't ask me, okay? That's what I had to tell the other person, okay? So keep that in mind, too.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. Hope you all, I hope you listened to that, John.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Okay.[585.38][585.38](LAUGHTER).
Hi. My name is Jo Lawson, and I live at 805 Hillcrest Avenue here in Titusville. And my case seems pretty irrelevant compared to the rest of the stories tonight, but I applied for a building permit here in the city of Titusville over a year and a half ago, and I was disapproved because they said, you know, the planning department said I needed to build a road, build sidewalks, donate it back to the city, you know, yada, yada, yada. And then tonight, I come in here, and they've got funding for the sidewalks, and I'm just trying to get out of Mr. Johnson's neighborhood, because he's my neighbor, and I'm trying to move to the south end of town. And (LAUGHTER), but they won't let me, buddy. Anyways, in the process of the last year and a half, it's been real enlightening, because I was told that, you know, I had to get an engineer and all of this stuff, and all of the approval and meet state regulations for this 50-foot-a-road, and now the lot is on the corner of Worth and Louisiana, on the south end of Titusville off of Barna. And literally, I'm like, what in the world is going on? Because I do live in Mr. Johnson's neighborhood in Forest Hills Estates, and we're not gated, no HOA, no sidewalk, right, Mr. Johnson? Okay. But we've watched, right? We've watched. On Tropic, they just improved, and so they improved this guy's property on the corner. There's a five-acre track on Hillcrest and Tropic Street. And I watched recently, and so did Mr. Johnson, they went along and they built this sidewalk right there, right? They approved his property, that guy's property tremendously, and it stops at the end of his property, right? It's a sidewalk to nowhere, right? But for a year and a half, every time I go to the city, they give me a runaround, a runaround, a runaround. And I'm like, I want to build a handicap house that I'm capable of living in, that has walk-in showers, ADA, I'm a handicap person, I'm also female, and I don't mean to be ugly and call the, you know, sex thing out, but I'm going to. Is there some difference between me and me trying to improve, you know, build a property here in Titusville compared to the man that owns that five-acre track down the street? Because he got given a sidewalk. That's what they said I needed, a sidewalk in a street. You see what I'm saying? They also have asphalted, they asphalted Evergreen, Bailey Street, and I believe the Holiday Lane over in our neighborhood, Grove, it all got asphalted. And it doesn't, they told me I had to have gutters, sidewalks, drainage.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Could you send me an email with your property that you're looking to do?
And I'd get your email address.
Andrew dot Connors at titusville dot com.
Okay, I got you.
Yep.
I appreciate it.
Be happy to look into it.
Get me out of his neighborhood.[789.43][789.43](LAUGHTER).
So I came in here last time, and I talked about how silent y'all were when all sorts of terrible things have happened to your citizens. And tonight, I come in, and I have witnessed the chilling of public comment, trying to get people to just kind of wait you out. It was a tactic that Muhammad Ali used to use all the time. He'd kind of dance around, wear everybody out, get them tired, and then he'd win. Unfortunately, it's not going to work this time, because the people are not going away. We do recognize that this is absolutely tyrannical behavior. It's insane what is happening in this room. I assume that there are several attorneys in this room. Free speech matter to anybody in here? Doing the right thing? Standing up for the citizens? Any of that? I know, they're not going to answer me. They're not going to answer me. So I watched as one of my council members just laughed while Mr. Johnson talked about being arrested for ridiculous charges, which were later drawn to where he was unable to get medication while he was in jail, and that's pretty serious for a senior citizen. It's pretty terrible that anybody would find that funny. It's disgusting.[884.44][884.44](LAUGHTER). You saw. Samantha Charles has waited 15 weeks to know what happened to her son. I guess making her wait a couple more hours didn't really matter to you. We're waiting for answers. We want to know things. We want to know, Mr. Abate, did you tell the chief to let her see the video? But you're not getting an answer either. You're going to sit there and ignore me, just like you, and you, and you, and you. There are people in the city that have been coming in here for years, just trying to do the right thing, asking about public records that went missing, asking about sewage spills, asking about lawsuits, asking about very important things, and you guys just don't give a shit. You are real clear. You are real clear. You were clear with your science last time, and you are clearer with your silence, and your silence, and your silence, and your silence. These are signs that were held many years ago on these grounds. Tyrants. We watched this behavior in the Civil Rights Movement. Martin Luther King stood up against behavior like this. We have watched this over and again in history, and you continue to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.[983.73][983.73](APPLAUSE).
Anybody else? Anybody else? Got something?
Sorry, I'd like to just make a comment, and I would like to make a comment. Thank you. No, I'm going to make this comment. I did talk to Ms., no.
Point of order.
I would like to make this comment. I did ask Mr. Abate to ask Chief Lau to come to the meeting. I felt like it would be important for him to share, and so I want the community to know. I did request that he came so that he could share any updates. I can't speak for the rest of the council. I don't have any updates, but I asked for him to come.
Remember, Mscoso, grandstanding aside, we have an order to keep, and my job is to run the meeting.[1028.61][1028.61](APPLAUSE). Order. All right. I mean, we could, you guys want to table the rest of it?
Me neither.
Yeah. Ma'am? Ma'am, you're just yelling, and we're not getting any business done.
I didn't know my son, I didn't know the truth.
Okay.
What happened? I didn't know the truth about my son.
Ma'am.
I don't care about getting kicked out.
I'm not trying to kick you out. I'm trying to move the meeting forward. I'm trying to move the meeting forward. You yelling from there is not helping.
You don't care about me. You don't care about the community. You were not for the people. I didn't wait enough for me to hear what you about. And I'm going to ask all of you to steal the election this time. We're going to be there. I'm going to be there. Because I don't care. The only one that cares, maybe. I'm going to take this.
Oh, tactic.
I've been sitting here, waiting to see what happened to my son. Y'all shot my son, running from the back.
All right, please leave. Please leave. I'm asking you to leave.
I don't care.
Officer, please escort her out.
I don't care about getting kicked out, because this is ridiculous.
Please leave, if you're just going to yell, because everybody has an opportunity to speak. I get that.
I've been waiting all night. Y'all booed the comments. That's what we're here for. I'm not going nowhere. I'll be back next meeting.
That's fine, you can come back next meeting.
I want to know the truth about my son. It's going to stay in justice where you are. I'm never leaving.
I'm trying to get you up there, but people are interrupting. You're interrupting other people's opportunity to speak.
I'm waiting, I don't care. I don't care about my son. If I stand over there, it goes, my son, grab me. I'm tired of it.
Recite.
Melina Villan, Historic Indian River City. I'm here to talk about our favorite topic, the city-owned rights of ways. First, I would like to thank Mayor Mscoso and the interim city manager for actually coming down to look at the problems. I hope to meet Sue, Tom, and Brad to get a solution to a problem that should have never happened. So all I wanted was this stop sign coming out of the alleyway south of me that's leaning behind a tree to be righted, because our cars are blowing through it. I called the city's street department and was told that the alley behind North Brevard Charities is a private, not city, property. So the stop sign belongs to them, and, well, that's just wrong. So I go and double-check the street maps, and it looks about the same as the 2023 map. None of the alleyways are there, except for mine, which was added, and now goes all the way through to Parish, an alleyway that has been a dead end with no turnaround for 80 years, and you guys just opened it back up. Now, it's on F dot right-of-way maps as being a through alley. Once again, it was halfway abandoned in the 1940s, and that's the problem. You're looking and dealing with streets and alleys that are over 100 years old. So another history lesson. Originally platted in 1913, you can see that every property had an alley running behind it. It runs from Bowie to the north side of Pritchard. It was replatted in 1924 before the opening of Cheney Highway. The most noticeable changes to the plating being the addition of the south side of Pritchard to Cheney Highway, and the alley between Kokeena and Pritchard being turned into Jepson. But there was also a 1925 plating that I don't think anyone knows about. It made the boundaries to IRC to where the Addison Creek meanders, but we don't have the 1925 plating. Rather a vague description approved by the Florida Senate in November of 1925. But we do have the 1925 city plan, which turns all the alleyways into green spaces. And my favorite thing, you see where the parking lot and gas station are for Cumberland Farms, how their unclassified streets, as you can see from the 1965 aerial photo, that's probably leftover from when it appeared to be a trailer park 60 years ago. Are you going to reopen those streets, too, without warning? So your street map is wrong. I only wanted the stop sign fixed, and instead I ran into a host of other problems. I am hopeful that this problem gets a quick resolution. Thank you. And just so you guys know, I have done a lot of history and everything with Brevard, and I wasn't going to mention this. I, for the past year, volunteered with a local historical organization. With everything that's going on, I feel remiss not to let you guys know that the seat of the North Brevard, KKK, in 1925, was in Memm's Elementary School. They met every Thursday evening, all visitors welcome. There have been numerous KKK meetings throughout the mid-'20s, including a parade in downtown Titusville in the mid-'20s of the Ku Klux Klan. So I just think that I, with everything that's going on, that I would be remiss if I did not mention that. Thank you.
Thank you. City clerk? Sorry, the clock didn't start last time. I didn't notice until you're like two minutes into it, but I didn't know where, you know, trying to be fair to you. Anybody else have a public comment? I see none moving on, city manager? Oh, it's my report.
I have just three informational items on the...
Sorry, I said city manager, but it's our report.
Okay, you want to do mayor and council reports first?
Yeah, so Sarah, would you like to go first?
I don't think I have anything right now, so I'll pass.
All right. Vice Mayor Cole?
I have been getting a lot of complaints about Wire 3 digging up and not doing the proper things. I met with, I met with people from Wire 3 this morning at 10:30, and we went around, and as we were meeting, they cut a water line. I went to the people, but, and it wasn't a city water line. The water line was within private property. So I went with the HOA president at La Cita, because that's where they are right now, and they promised that they were going to do better supervision around the people. The major concern is they have been parking heavy equipment on people's properties, which I think they have the right to do, because, but, the problem with that is even if the Florida statute gives them the right to do it, at least common courtesy would be to go up to the door, knock on the door, and tell the people you're getting ready to do it. So I was given some assurances. Whether that was good, bad, or indifferent, I don't know, but I don't think they want to meet with me again to give me excuses as to why it's not working. So we'll see what happens, because they're in La Cita now, but they're going to be all over the city. And this problem has existed before. Last year, Claire Channel was putting in, and I guess AT&amp;T is going to come and put in, so everybody's doing their own little trenches to put it in. And although our people have gone out and marked where the utilities are, there have been instances with them digging where it hasn't been marked. So as luck would have it, like I said, they cut a water line while we, the three guys from Wire 3 were standing up talking to me, so we'll see what happens.
Mayor, could I add to that real quick?
Yes.
Just on that discussion, because the state won the contract, and I know, I think the mayor did a mayor's minute on it, I also talked to our PIO about this. She plans to do some informational pieces on it. I will tell you, I've had citizens reach out to me with issues with Wire 3. It's on city property, and it, like, one particular one I had, it had been that way since November, and we just, she just thought, oh, let me just ask Sarah, and we were able to get staff to go and look at it and then contact Wire 3, and they were out the next day. So I think for us, in the interim, because this is not a contract that we awarded, I think we just need to encourage citizens to reach out to us if they do see some issue, and then we can get staff to hold Wire 3 accountable, given the situation, and I think our PIO will also do some information.
Yeah, believe me, they are reaching out to us.
Yep, yes.
Does that conclude your report, Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
All right. And just on that topic, I met with Mr. Abate today, and staff is keeping track of all the water lines they break and how much it's costing our city, so hopefully we can get some, you know, restitution. All right. Member Nelson, would you like to go next?
If I could. Monday, we went to the Memorial Day celebration and ran into my kid's old coach, who is an Olympian, and she's now the coach for Titusville High School. She's a swim coach, and what she was saying to us was, I think it was Palm Bay has five community pools. Brockledge also has a community pool, along with several other communities. And so I would like to look at the advisability of us having a community pool. One of the things she mentioned was she said that the colleges are looking for places for their swimmers to come during the winter, during breaks, and it provides revenue, and also swim meets. So she was saying, you know, it might be worth it to look at doing something like this. And of course, I'd be very grateful for our kids to have a community pool. We did have one. It was Titusville Hot, and it was, as I understand, built by Rotary, given to the school board as a community pool, and it's no longer a community pool. Maybe Stan remembers, but that's what one of the older Rotarians told me. So I would like us to at least look at it, see if it's feasible. So I'm asking for advisability.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a card if you're making a motion.
All right.
Stan Johnston?
Motion and second on advisability of a community pool.
I'm doing some swimming. Y'all probably know that already, some of you, and I go to the YMCA right now, except because of this. But I have some sympathy for it, because I came from West Virginia, and I'm so ashamed when I came to Florida, being near the ocean and so forth, it was so backward, because I had... had so many swimming pools where I lived in West Virginia. I think that there should be, let's say, something as far as swimming pools here because people drowned, too many people drowned. I'm just embarrassed. I mean, as far as I can say is, I hate to say this, but as far as I can say is, when I moved here, Titusville's backward and still is backward. That's a hell of a thing to say. The city of Titusville was formerly the city with the highest per capita income in the whole United States. Look at it now. I can't believe it. So, anyhow, I don't, I want to, don't make an opinion on this because I would like to see something, but it seemed like, I don't know what's going on, because like Royal Oak, they got a swimming pool there. It's dry, it's dry. It's a shame. We have, we had, the parish hospital had a nice swimming pool and now it's, I don't know, I don't think I can even get it to use it anymore. The one that's, it's got a building over it. What do you call it? Indoor, indoor pool. So, but we do need something. We really, our community needs something. So, I don't know what you can do is whether Titusville should build a pool or something like that because right now, guess what happened years ago is that Budweiser offered to build a swimming pool free at Astronaut High School and Astronaut High School turned it down because it was a beer, beer place and they wanted to put Astronaut Eagle in the bottom of the pool. So, I don't know. It's a backward place here and with the KKK, like she was talking about, it's a backward.
Well, I did hear that same story about the Anheuser-Busch. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Unfortunately, the school board, you know, didn't feel too good about that one. But I have a motion and a second for advisability about a pool. And, you know, one thing I want to say about is if you look at doing like an aquatic center that has recreation, but at the same time, you know, something for laps and that could maybe be an avenue from some TDC money, Tourism Development Council money. You know, there's various different ways we can slice it. So, looking at all available options of funding, even if it requires maybe putting something like that before the residents, because I know I personally wouldn't feel comfortable, you know, if we got to that point, let's say it's going to cost, you know, $10 million, $20 million. I think that that decision should end up with the residents ultimately.
Yep.
Not a survey. Official, official, because, you know, just kind of like we did with the riverfront property there. So, that's just my two cents on my discussion piece. Vice Mayor Cole, did you have anything to add?
Yeah, I had something for discussion and that is, I'm on the YMCA board and we're in the process of doing a fundraiser to heat the pool. And to heat the pool that we have that's existing is $160,000. We're doing a fundraiser for it. But, you know, there may be an opportunity for a partnership and I'm not sure eventually what's going to happen with the pool at the Parish, but we're also looking at a combined operation. So, there are two pools that are already existing and there may be some kind of city partnership that we could do because I think the cost of us building a city pool with the operation and everything, it may be cost prohibitive, but I am going to vote for the advisability of it. But I, I'm just throwing those, that information out.
I think the voters would be very interested, especially those kids, in having a community pool. So, the question would be, are they understanding that we're going to have to pay for it? So, I don't know.
Any further discussion from council? All right, motion and a second. Already called the cards. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
So, second thing, sorry, I'm long-winded. Long-winded tonight. Mountain bikes, mountain bike trail. And talking to Jason, we already have the bike trails, but he was saying that they do the same thing. They have groups that go from one trail to the next trail. And so, it's almost economic development because we're talking about bringing people in that like these trails. There's actually a group that will help build the trails and there's potentially funding for it. So, I would like to have us get advisability on mountain bike trails.
I'll second.
I got a motion and I have a second. Any discussion from council? I don't see any.
Mountain bikes? We don't have any mountains. Yeah, really. I mean, they got trails, but I don't think they should be calling mountain bikes. Although what I do is, what I do is when nobody's looking, I've taken my bicycle up and down your steps out here because there's no mountains. So, I just have to go up and down the stairs on my bicycle. So, anyhow, please don't misuse the word bike, mountain bikes, because it's a mountain, it's bicycle trails. That's all I would say. Because these are, we don't have any mountains, do we?
Well, I think the differential, Mr. Johnson, if I may, is a bike trail, somebody in their minds will think paved road and a mountain bike is a type of bike that goes over dirt.
Yeah. Well, we have a thing, place in, I don't know if it's still there, in the park, Marina Park, where I've gone up and down hills, up and down. So, wears me out pretty quickly though. It's real quick, once or twice around, that's it for me. Okay. And, but I did do, I went over 77 miles about two years ago.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Member Nelson?
So, the last thing I want to bring up is obviously getting a report back from FDLE on the shooting has been agonizing. Time struck out, it's just way too long. We did talk to the state attorney's office, Mr. Abadi and I called last week. They do have the report. There will be three attorneys that will review it, including the state attorney. So, it's pretty long, pretty involved, but it's making progress. But that being said, it seems like maybe we need to find somebody to do investigations other than FDLE. And that's just my suggestion, my thought.
Thank you, Member Nelson, for bringing that up. When we had this discussion at our last meeting about this, I think that was my comment was maybe we need to look at, you know, BCSO or somebody other than FDLE to be our go-to provider as they're more and more being short-staffed. So, but again, Member Nelson, if you have a motion and there's a second, we can open up for further discussion.
Do we need a motion?
Well, if you want to do advisability on it.
Okay. I can do advisability. I would, my motion would be that we look at what other options we have as opposed to FDLE to investigate officer-involved shootings.
Second?
I have a motion and I have a second. Yes, ma'am.
Motion, can I make a comment?
In one second, I'm just, yeah. So, we have a motion to advisability to look over other possible avenues of officer-involved shooting investigations. We have a second. I'm used to calling Stan, but yes.
Okay. Just a quick thing. When you did this checking, did you find out the question I brought up? Is it illegal for the department here, Chief Lau, to release the video now? I haven't heard that answer.
He was asked not to release it at this point.
Is it illegal?
It would not be illegal, but it would not be proper.
Well, you know, properly...
From an attorney's point of view, if it was my case, I'd be having a heart attack if he released it.
Well, I'm sure there's a number of people that might be having a heart attack about the citizens getting to see that video. But the point is, if it's not illegal, it should be released and it's not going to really affect the investigation if the mother gets to see the video of her son. That's just a bunch of baloney, to be nice, so I don't use any bad words. But if it's not illegal and you've already, as the city council said, that you want it and Mr. Abadi was to request it, it needs to be done. That's my...
Thank you. So, we have a motion, second. Any further discussion about the advisability of looking at alternative means? Stan passed.
Oh, you passed.
Alternative investigative for officer-involved shootings. Member Stokel?
Yes. I thought when this got brought up at the last meeting, that it was advised that even though the state does take a long time, that it's a best practice to have them do it. And I will say, when it got brought up to potentially have the county do it, I don't think that was seen as favorably. So, I, I don't know, I don't, I, I know this particular instance has taken longer and I will tell you, in being up here, you know, going on nine years, this is the first time that this has happened. So, I think I'm a little bit reluctant to make a change like that, just because this particular one took a while. While I don't like that it took this long, I'm hopeful that the findings will be accurate and correct and it makes me feel better knowing that the state is overseeing it and not somebody so close to our area. So, I don't know. I don't, I'm not particularly in favor of this.
Member Muscoso?
Yeah, I would agree with Member Stokel. I think I, even though it has taken a while, I think my grievance has been not so much, it's just the lack of updates I feel like even we have gotten. And that was my, my question to Mr. Bate today is, it's really hard to sit up here every two weeks and look people in the eye and have no answers. And so, I did request for Chief Lau to come. So, perhaps he could explain, but if this is the process, I feel comfortable with FDLE being in charge of it and I agree, I wouldn't want it to be any closer to home. It just makes it a more straightforward process.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yeah, I totally agree with that. But I do think something's got to be done because three months is just too damn long, you know? And I, something has got to be done. I don't know if after we finally get the report, that then we can meet with FDLE because I, I just, I remember when I was at the NAACP meeting and I gave a talk and there was an FDLE guy there. And right at that time, Orlando had had an officer-involved shooting and it took one month to get the information back. And that was something I said and I was hoping that what I said was true, but it's obvious it wasn't. But we've got to take a long, hard look at this. I don't care who is at fault because we have no idea, but the optics of this is deplorable. The optics makes everybody think that we're trying to hide something and we're trying to follow procedures. So, I'm just hoping that we don't have to go through another city council meeting like we've gone through tonight. I understand, I totally understand why the people that are associated and the mother are upset. I totally understand that because it's taken so long for them to get results. So, I would say, I don't, and I agree with both Member Muscoso and Member Stokel, that I don't think we need to have a local agency do it because then again, we're back at optics again and that's not going to look good. Putting the FDLE, which is disassociated with us doing the investigation, but hell, if they're going to take three months to do it, maybe we need to go get Nebraska or New York or somebody else to do the investigations. But I think that we can have a come-to-Jesus meeting with FDLE to try to say, hey, guys, you're putting us in a very, very tough position. We need help because it just looks horrible. It really looks horrible.
It does.
Yeah, and I believe that's kind of the motion was just for advisability, explore options. I mean, at the end of the day, council doesn't have to do anything with it, but it's, you know, up to the motion maker and the secondor.
It's basically let's explore options. But maybe...
Yeah, go ahead. I was saying, a part of that could be that as we do that, we, like I said, we get FDLE involved in it so that we can find out, why does it take so long?
Maybe we should ask them to come talk to us.
I think we should, as a part of your motion.
And say, hey, tell us why it took so long. And maybe we need to do that before we...
Maybe so.
All right. So, do you have a friendly amendment to your motion?
Yes.
Secondor?
Yes.
All right, so now the motion has been amended to ask FDLE to come in and explain their process and, you know, quite frankly, why it took so long. Everybody on the same page? Would you guys like to re-comment or anything? Good. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Are you, Ms. Jilling? Member Muscoso?
Sure. First, I want to thank Mr. Bate. He's been super helpful. Whenever I've had calls from residents, I've asked him if it's necessary, if he would come out and he's done that a few times. We're going out somewhere tomorrow and what's been really helpful is for him to get eyes on the situation and then to be able to direct the staff instead of me trying to figure it out and going back and forth. So, I appreciate your willingness to do that. This one is going to be a tough one and I'm going to ask our interim city attorney if she'd like to say anything before I speak. No. Okay. So, I told her I was going to do this and I wanted to give her the opportunity to share her side and you're sure you don't want to speak.
I'll answer any questions I've asked.
So, I got, and I got a few weeks ago, a records request from someone named Maverick Brownfield. Has anybody else gotten a records request from Maverick Brownfield?
Not from him, but many others.
So, I found it interesting. The request was for all of my social media from the month of December. It said, I would like to request a copy of all social media publications made by Megan Muscoso regarding official city business during the month of December 2024. So, I did my best to comply. I went through my social media and I took screenshots and I sent that off. This morning, I get another request and they're asking for the same person. Now, the name is Maverick Brownfield slash Anthony Altamont. This comes from Lisa Marie, our records person. She said, the record request that's been provided was not responsive to the original request. Please provide the complete audiovisual content of each post that was made in the month of December to include all audio and video messages associated with each post that was provided by Ms. Muscoso. So, I did my best to fulfill the request with this one. I emailed back quickly and said, hey, here's the link to my social media if you would like it. But what was interesting on that request is there was an email or a text exchange that was included to the request and I don't think it was on purpose. And I'm going to pass this down so that, I've got one for each of you, so that you can see this conversation. And I'm very, very disappointed in this and I hate to even have to bring it up, but I think this is something I have to do. So, it's an exchange between our interim city manager, our interim city attorney, Chelsea, and some other person. The name's blacked out, so I don't know. But if you go through it, what it is, is our interim city attorney telling whoever this is to request these records from me and then saying, wait, you need to go back and request it this way. So, I wanted to follow procedure and I wanted to do what was right. So, the first person I called was our, was Chelsea and I asked her about this. And I said, hey, look, this came in, I don't know anything about this. And until I told her, there's a picture of a little girl and this is what the text messages say, she finally admitted, yes, that was me. So, the messages say, do you think you can cut and paste that last message I sent you and put that in the reply back to the email you got to the city? So, I asked Chelsea, why would you do this? Why would you request someone else to give records, asking records from me? I honestly, I don't, I don't understand why this happened, what's going on. I asked, who was Maverick Brownfield? It's a Brevard resident. And Chelsea did admit to doing this, but... Brownfield? It's a Brevard resident. And Chelsea did admit to doing this, but I don't know what to do with this. I honestly don't. I've never had a city attorney go to a third party to request records. I asked Chelsea, why didn't you just request them from me? Because I also got this one. I got another one for some audio recording, and I submitted that. Right now, I have Carrefour, which is the developer from Apollo Gardens, asking for records. When I asked the city, Richard Broom, and I asked Chelsea, how do I comply with this? Chelsea told me, you need to hire outside legal counsel. So is that correct, or is that, is that true, Ms. Chelsea?
Yes, that advice was given to you.
Okay. So hire outside legal counsel. So I'm in the process, because I'm asking our city for help with the records request from Carrefour, Apollo Gardens. And I'm asking them, what does, what do I need to include? Could you help me understand this? And I'm told, you need to, you need to get your own outside city counsel. So I'm in the process of hiring an attorney. So that means the records request that they're, they're asking for is going to take time. I've never done this before. It, it's, it's not an overnight thing. So when I asked Chelsea, why, why did you do this? Why would, why wouldn't you just come to me? And she said, I wanted to see how you would respond to this request, like testing me. Would you like to add anything to that?
We haven't, we have several ongoing public records requests, and my job is to make sure that we have compliance. And I may have done some, may have made a mistake, and I've told you that. And I would like to, again, apologize for maybe going outside of the scope of where I should have. I don't believe that anything was illegal, and could have done it a different way. But my goal is to get the correct responses from public records requests.
So in order to get a correct response, you wanted to see how I was going to respond, you go to a third party to request that, instead of just saying, hey, Megan, this is how you need to respond. This is what I'm looking for. That is what's disappointing. I, I don't know what to do with this. I really, I don't. And I, I'm just, I'm absolutely shocked by it. I asked for advice. How do I respond to this? I'm told to get legal counsel. And then I have this third party directed by our interim city attorney asking for records. So I, I asked her to share, because I wanted to hear her first. I spoke to Mr. Abate as well. Dwight Severs was in the meeting with us, because I needed some guidance, because I've never handled this. But I just wanted you guys to have this, so that you're aware of what is going on. I don't, I don't know what to do with it. I'm still waiting to comply with the other records requests, because I am, I don't know. Have you guys gotten the advice that you need to seek outside counsel?
Yes.
For a records request?
From, from Richard Broom, I did.
For a records request, too?
Because he said, my social media is outside. I, I got you. It's hard to talk into the mic and to you. Thank you, Ms. Conklin.
You're welcome.
So Richard Broom advised me, when I got a public records request for my social media, that I needed to hire outside legal counsel to see if I needed to comply or not, because he felt that that was, he's, he's the city attorney for the city. And he said that waned on personal. So that's what I did. That was, I think, back in January, or right after we were first elected, because I didn't know how to respond either. So I went through that, the same process, which is why I made certain changes to my social media, to make it easier to follow that process. But yeah.
But you didn't have the city attorney go through a third party to try to see how you were going to respond?
Not that I'm aware of.
Not that you're aware of. I've asked, has she done this to anyone else? I just, and the question I did tell Chelsea, I am going to ask, and I hope she has an answer for this, so that we are all aware of this. I asked if you could tell us, because I need to know this, when, this is actually the request that you wrote, and you got this person to say, when you ask for a request of a copy of all social media publications regarding official city business, what does that look like for us? Just in case Sarah gets one, or somebody else, what does that look like? Because obviously, the response I gave Maverick Brownfield wasn't up to par, and you asked that person to add more to it. So just for, from my knowledge, this isn't a personal thing. This is a request that you sent me. How do I respond when you say all social media publication? What are you looking for, Chelsea?
Public records includes all photographs, videos, recordings, and if content is in the form of audio or video talking about things that are official business, or could come before the city, then the content that makes up the audio and video as a part of that post or communication would be subject to the public records law and subject to disclosure upon request.
Okay. So we're all aware that is, if we get that request, now that could have been easily a conversation, and not whatever this was. So, thank you.
Does that conclude your report?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right. So it's time for my report. My report's in the packet. A lot of, a lot of great things happening in the city of Titusville. I'm excited to highlight those on a daily basis, you know? Unfortunately, we had a tragedy strike real close to home just yesterday with unfortunate passing of that, that mother of three on 95. That's, that's really touched a lot of us. She was a nurse here locally, went to, you know, Park Avenue Church. So that's definitely, it's been tough. And I think not only that tragic accident, but the two others that have happened this year before have really done a number on, on us here locally. But I'm optimistic that we're gonna, we're gonna pull forward. We got a lot of amazing, fresh ideas. I mean, Joe Lynn just pitched the idea of an aquatic park. And I mean, I was about to jump out of, out of my seat, because, you know, I got two small kids. With that being said, I think tonight's meeting, if you look at the business section of the meeting, we got done in two hours and 10 minutes, which I thought was very, very productive and efficient. And I think that I would like to pass the gavel and make the motion that we have staff do some advisability on ordinance change to number 2-24, the rules of counsel, moving petitions and requests, only having one at the end, and not televising them due to the fact of the flagrant FCC violations by Ms. Elizabeth Baker tonight. So with that, is there a second?
I will second for discussion.
There's a second? Discussion, Ms. Stokel?
Yeah. I will tell you, there's definitely been a difference in meetings where I feel like we're able to conduct business effectively in meetings that we haven't, and just in the time that I've served. And it has been night and day. And I think it goes to your philosophy on government's role and what we're supposed to do here as leaders. And so a lot goes into it. And I talk to my colleagues about this a lot. One of them is, we need, there are certain things we have to do. There are certain items on the agenda we have to get through. We have to be respectful of people's time that show up. We need to make sure that we allow for public comment, and we need to be transparent. So I'm in favor of looking into this. I don't know what that looks like, or what that is, but I will tell you, since Palm Bay made their change, I asked, and I said, hey, since you guys stopped televising your public comment, when did you guys get out? They said, it was still daylight, 8:00 PM. And that's, and that's not to say that they don't care about public comment, because they still have public comment. They're just not giving them the platform for the video. And so to me, what we should be doing up here is making sure we're hearing people. It was great to see all the citizens that came for that CUP, and that they had that time. And I miss that sometimes during our meetings, where we have people that are coming, they have a petition, we act on that petition, and we have a happy citizen. And sometimes these meetings get overtaken by certain agendas, and that, that's not why we are here. We are here to serve 50,000 residents to the best of our ability. So I would be in favor of looking what we can do to help that process.
Member Nelson?
And I have to say, I know there are people that like having the petitions first. I sort of do. But I have had citizens tell me, hey, you know, we're here to find out what the business is, not to listen to everybody's gripes. We want to know what's going on in our city, what, what, what things you're voting on, and not necessarily what everybody else is thinking. So, you know, there are people that are like, well, you know, we need to talk, agreed. But there are citizens, are citizens out there that by far don't seem to want to listen to it. So.
Thank you, Member Nelson. Member Moscoso?
The people are the business. The people are the business. And there are people who can't make it to these meetings. And they deserve the right to know what is going on. I often will go and watch the P and Z and hear their discussion, but I want to know what the residents think. And that is even taking that away from me. I like to see what's going on in Palm Bay. So I will often skip through and hear what the residents, because I get a better picture of the overall feel by hearing a lot of the public comment and thinking, oh, they're having issues with their cameras, because it's not on the agenda. But you'll hear 10 people get up and talk about the cameras. That's how we know things. And so for me, I think it's unnecessary. I think we need to allow, yeah, of course, we want our meetings to run more efficiently, and maybe we can come up with other ways. I don't think this is the way. And I feel I was elected to listen to people, and if they want to come and scream for three minutes, then that is their right. And this is my job. And I don't, if I don't get out till 12 o'clock, and I don't like it, but that's what I signed up for.
Thank you. Yeah, not taking away anybody's right to talk and come yell at us for a while, if they would like to do so. But at the end of the day, we have a business meeting to run and to conduct. And to remember Nelson's point, you know, seeing that, that excited family, be able to have them, their story told, is why we're here. Anything that comes up in petitions and requests will be advertised on a future agenda where citizens can come, come talk about that item. Member Stokel?
Yes, just to add to that, this is advisability, and it's, that's for us to come up with. What can we do to make sure that we are running effectively? Those public comments will still be in agendas. Maybe we look at, maybe it's, the audio's still on, but we're not doing the video footage. So we can still hear that publicly, for those that can't. Because, again, at the end of the day, you also have to consider, there's residents that don't come to the meetings, because they don't want to sit through hours and hours of the same thing being repeated. So, again, I think that it's important for us to go out and make sure we're talking and trying to engage with as many citizens as possible, to make sure that we are running effective government. And again, not limiting comment, but making sure that we are sticking to what our purpose is, which, to remember Moscoso's point, is the people, all 50,000 people that we're serving them appropriately.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yeah, I made the motion to move the comments, because I looked at the agenda, and I saw the agenda was filled. And I wanted to get through the work first, and then we go to petitions and requests. We didn't cut off petitions and requests. We just put it at the end. And I, there, there's got to be a better way to do this. And I think that the advisability, we're not saying we're going to stop. We're not saying what we're going to do. All we're doing is asking for advisability for a better way to build a mousetrap.
Yeah, and if this does pass, it'll be, you know, a first reading and a second reading. It's not set in stone. But I see there's a couple cards that got turned in. So are you going to call Tony first?
Can't hear you.
I was talking to the city clerk.
Tony Chappaloo?
Yeah. You want to talk about optics? This looks really good. This looks really good, Sarah. You sat here through this whole meeting, doing something, God only knows what. At least it wasn't eating this time, like it is a lot of times. It is your job to listen to us. It is your job to let people come up here. And these people that came here, and you changed the, you changed the order. By God, they sat here, though. The mother didn't leave, and her supporters didn't leave. Optics, you're talking about optics. This looks really bad. This is a really bad suggestion, even to want to entertain. I worked in television. I don't come here to speak to you, to be on TV. Look at me, Ron. That's my brother. He's at home watching. But I can see him anytime. He doesn't have to watch your meeting to see people on TV. That's not what they come here, and that's not what they rave about. A lot of people are even very nervous and don't get up right away, because it is TV. Don't be stupid. Don't cut your nose off to spite your face right now at a time in this city, when the people are coming time after time, week after week, and they sat here four hours tonight, and you're going to talk about cutting it off, not showing it, not letting people know what's going on? I'm just livid. I'm beside myself. I'm going to have to leave this meeting before Johnson throws me out.
City clerk, is there another card? Who is it?
Kathleen O'Rourke.
Well, I second everything Tony said. But let me also point out, your minutes are junk, absolute junk. And so if the citizens are trying to know what happens here because of the minutes, they haven't a clue. So before you even consider this, why don't you consider using something like AI and getting every single thing said here recorded? Because if the citizens don't have that already, and we sure don't, and now we're not going to be able to hear what the other citizens say unless we bring in the, our own people to record it. And people are not, I mean, ridiculous. I, I, you know, furious with you, but I'm not here to be on TV. I really couldn't care less about being on TV, except I want the citizens to know the things that I'm saying. And you look awful. And you know, Mayor Connors, you're a joke, because you're there illegally, and you know it, and everybody here knows it. So why should we even think about something that you would recommend? Anything else? I'm disgusted with you, totally. And I'm really disappointed in all these decisions you've been making tonight, one after another, to push people off, to not hear the citizens. And now you have terrible minutes. You're not going to have any recording, and if it's audio only, that's ridiculous. Why do that? Which there's no time savings. You were supposed to, I believe, according to our attorney, who I think should be fired for her behavior. You just, it's appalling how you are treating the citizens. It's unbelievably appalling. And I'm very disappointed in this. And all I'll do is everything I can, and I'm a real good person at getting the word out to the voters, because I have their emails. I don't have the city emails for the water department, because even though legally you're supposed to provide them, our attorney here opted not to do that, and came up with multiple excuses. So you're really not serving the citizens. And you really should be ashamed of yourselves.
City clerk?
Motion to extend the meeting?
I cannot make that motion.
I'm moved to extend the meeting to 10:45?
Sure. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Yes. City clerk?
Elizabeth Baker?
Apparently, I was mentioned when I walked out the room because of my horrible, horrible language.
Yes.
I'm not really sorry. I'm not sorry at all. You deserve it. You deserve so much more than that. You guys are disgusting. You're a joke, dude. A total joke. I've seen people like you before. I have dealt with demons much bigger. Creepy behavior. It's creepy, narcissistic, disgusting behavior when you try to silence people or limit them to speaking. It's absolutely against everything that this country has been fighting for, for a really, really, really long time. You guys are okay with going backwards, though, aren't you? You want to go back to when people in positions like you could just arrest guys like him? You can just bring charges against advocates. You can just do whatever the hell you want to do, because you, the Kane... because you the king or the princess. Sit up here and eat. You sit up here and you don't look at people when they're talking. You refuse to answer questions. Maybe the reason that you're so comfortable with limiting everybody else's speech is because how quiet you guys are. Maybe that's what it is. You think that? Maybe? Got a minute and nine seconds here. What do we do? Just sit here, look at each other, stare at each other? You know better than me, don't you? You're smarter than me, aren't you? Oh, you are. I see how uncomfortable you are with all of this, Mr. Cole. For several years, I've had a lot of respect for you, actually. I would continue to have that respect if you stood up for the people in this situation here, too. I can't wait. I cannot wait to see these four seats changed. How long do we have? Anybody know when the last election is? When do we get rid of these people? When do they leave our city council and stop treating us like we don't matter? You're very welcome.
City clerk?
Stale Bailey?
I just want to say thank you. You are going to make Brevard News explode if you do this. Because we're going to come in here, and we're going to do 10 times better than your production. We're going to come in here and we're going to get every single one of your facial expressions, yours. We're going to get the audience, and we're going to get the speakers. And we're going to fulfill the job that yours meant to do because you don't have a thick skin to deal with what people say up here. We have come here time and time again, and I've told you about fake accounts being made and how they're made to harass people online. And you were just given an example and proof that your sitting temporary city attorney did it. That validates everything we've been saying. I have not had one of you ask any further details about the allegations that are being made, from Stan Johnson's arrest to them coming to my home, to the right call, none of it. And when people come up here and they speak during public comment, no, it's not to come up here and get three minutes of FaceTime. It's because they're trying to put things on the record. So if you're going to take away this little section here, that's fine. Brevard News will fulfill what you can't, what you can't do or don't want to do because we believe in the Constitution. But get your minutes right. Because they do not reflect. And what I will start doing is I'll start putting videos of speakers in your exact minutes so people can see online, the 1.7 million followers we have. They can see for themselves how the minutes are versus how the public comments are. This was all coordinated. We've known for a while. We've been reporting on this exact move. You waited till the end of this meeting to make this decision. Sneaky. And then you wonder why there's no public trust. Then you wonder why people don't like you. Then you wonder why people continue to talk about this type of stuff on social media. You guys are handing us everything on a silver platter. Tonight, my God, chef's kiss. You guys did amazing. Let's move the public comments. Do you know what I heard out in that hallway by that community? They said that was the equivalent of being sprayed with water hoses back in the day, what you did to them tonight. Telling them they had to wait four hours. These are people that work hard. I don't know if any of you guys have jobs. Some of us have multiple jobs. Where we're working from 4:00 a.m. to noon to 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. And you want them to sit through four hours till the end. And then you just sit there and you just look. Do you care? Do you ever follow up? I asked you that last time. Do you ever call the people that come up here and talk? Maybe they wouldn't be coming back here time and time again if you actually called and followed up or had your city manager do so.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. City clerk?
Stan Johnston?
Stan Johnston. I'm going to tell you something you don't like, and that's about Mrs. Moscoso. Is that I've asked her, I think even before she got elected, is that find out what the heck's going on with this spraying people with piss and poop. And the reason being is that it's horrible, what you guys done. Horrible. And so she won't give me an answer yet. She will not give me an answer because she won't ask the question to you guys. Why in the world are you doing it? It's, it's, what you're doing is, it's not dishonest. It's far beyond dishonesty. In other words, when you put down your toilet, you poop in your toilet, and you send it and put it on women, children, and babies. That's what you guys did. So there's no re, there's no way that, that she's pretty much, she's telling me is that there's no way that you guys will ever admit that this was the wrong thing to do. It was horrible what you did. It's not much different than Agent Orange, but it's different than Agent Orange. I've had so many buddies die from this Agent Orange. Horrible deaths. Same can happen with, with, with sewage spill. And you guys just ignore it as if it don't happen, as if it's going to, you're going to make it, ignore it so it just disappears, rewriting history like it never happened. Mr. Body, that goes for you, too, on this. You've been in this situation. I, I can't speak for, for your attorney, but this dirty, rotten politic is horrible. It's disgusting. It's illegal, what you're doing. And I've, as you know, I've, I've contacted the governor and so forth against one, two, three, four people right here. And you know, can't you remember about this fraud? I mean, you weren't, you just, you can read about it. If you want to know about the fraud, it still exists. You guys are still on the fraud. One, two, three, four, you, you guys, especially Mrs. Nelson and Mrs. Dr. Stokel. They were here when it was initiated in 2019. Fraud, fraud by my hometown government. You guys are shysters, liars, cheats, dishonest. There's no question about it. She doesn't have to explain it to me. She explained it to me by not being able to answer the question. She never could get an answer from city, city attorney. Not city attorney, but city manager. He's a crook. He's a shyster. Maybe you guys are, too. I pray for you. I really do. I pray for you. I don't think it does any good. Doesn't seem like it. So you guys have to live with yourself. And Sarah, maybe she'll wake up. Sarah, you don't realize what happened tonight. But many times I pointed to you as you were doing your homework. And I said, she's not listening, she's not listening, and so forth. If you don't believe me, ask, you know, a body or somebody.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you very much.
City clerk?
I'm against what you're doing.
The last card is Vicki Conklin.
It's really hard. I sit back here and I listen and I watch, and I know what good government is. This isn't. And it's so frustrating because I want to say so much, and I'm trying to hold back, but I really can't too much longer. I really thought we were in a democracy, and I thought Titusville was a good place to be. It's got so many wonderful people. And the citizens are why you're here. You ran for office, you signed your name. You knew what it would entail, especially if you've been reelected. You knew that the meetings were long, and you, you are here until the meeting is done, until the city business is conducted. You don't watch the clock and say, you measure the success of your meeting if you're done by 8:00 p.m. That's not a measure of a success of a meeting. The measure of a success is listening to the citizens of our community. You listen to their needs, you listen to their concerns. You answer them. You don't just look at them with a smirk on your damn face. You listen to them, and you address their needs. And you say, can we meet tomorrow? Can I go out and look at your issue tomorrow with you? Can I solve things for you? That is why you're here. Surely, to goodness, that's why you ran for office. It's why I ran for office and served for 11 years in the community I came from. And I can tell you I enjoyed every minute of it. It was fun because we made things happen and we solved problems. You guys are creating problems, and you're creating animosity of the residents and the citizens. And we have a bad eye now. We are looked on unfavorably from every place, not just our county. I can't believe this is all happening. We have an interim city attorney who is entrapping an elected council member. Does that not bother you? None of you made a comment about that. Is that a fireable offense? I believe this person should be fired. Entrapment of an elected council member? That's not serious enough for you? I mean, really, that is bad. That is really bad. She needs to go, and we need to get in somebody who can, who's interim, who can, until you get the interviews done for the new people. This is unacceptable behavior for anybody to be doing. We have corruption in the police department. We're very well established. We have corruption in elected officials, very well established. We have corruption of some city staff, very well established. Titusville deserves better. And you know how you can be better? Is you can listen to the residents and don't be corrupt. And that's what will make our city better.
Amen.
Thank you. City clerk, are there any other cards?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, guys, all for proving my point. You know, there's a lot of, again, political grandstanding happening. And if any one of these folks in here wanted to reach out to me, I have personally returned every phone call, every email, every text. No, I don't, I don't text. But I've, and I've gone out of my way to meet with people where they are. And Ms. Tony, you can't say that. You don't see me out in public, and we don't talk. We do. Exactly. So the fact that people can only get their concerns addressed by coming here and yelling at us on TV is just completely ridiculous. But you guys do not have the floor. I do. Thank you very much. I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discount, discussion from council? Member Nelson?
Can be. I understand what you're trying to do. And we do need to have an orderly meeting. But I think it's also important, like the citizens have said, they want to hear the business. But they, we also have a spot so that people can come in and talk to us. So with that in mind, I don't mind listening to different ideas on how to accomplish it, how to maybe do it better. I don't know that we can, but I'm willing to listen to whatever is said. But I think we do need to have a spot to listen to the citizens. And, yeah, I felt bad for those people tonight because I knew I had some information, which might have made them feel better. At least they know there's an end to all this going on. And I understand, but I understand your point that we need to be able to get the business done also. So that's my thought.
Thank you, Member Nelson. Member Moscoso?
Yeah, I would say our goal should be that residents don't feel like they have to come up here and do this. And we can do that by, and maybe you guys are doing it, I don't know, but answering emails and meeting with residents. And so that's one thing I, I try to do. I am not perfect at it. I can't say that I've answered every email. But if I know someone has an issue, let's try to solve it outside of these chambers. Because nobody wants to come here for five, six hours and have three minutes. It's not comfortable for people to do that. So I think our goal should be making sure that we meet with residents when there's an issue. If we know that someone has come up here, let's follow up. Let's ask the staff, how are we following up so that they don't have to come here for two, three, four, five, six weeks? You know, sometimes some of the requests I don't quite understand. But you know what? I'll call Glenn from Code Enforcement and say, let's drive out there. And a lot of times, that will validate someone so they say, somebody cares, somebody's listening. And so do I do it perfectly? Absolutely not. My goal is that a resident comes up once we are able to solve the issue, and then they can move on. But I don't want to take that opportunity. I know we're not taking it away from them. We're not giving that, we're not taking it away. But I think other people see things that are going on, and I think it's important. It's a way for our community to know. And I think, I do think by doing this, if we don't televise, it's, it's gonna, it's gonna be bad. It's gonna be bad.
Can I have a motion to extend the meeting five minutes?
Move to extend five more minutes.
Second.
Have a motion. Everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, so I have a mo, oh.
Sorry, just one last comment to Member Moscoso's point. And Member Nelson probably knows this. That typically is what happens for petitions and requests. I would say majority of the time, we only have citizens that come one time. And then I know for me, and my briefings are, I'll talk to Kevin afterwards, and I'll get an update or I'll ask and talk to the citizen. So typically, I would say, with the few exceptions, almost everybody's issue that they're coming for gets resolved. They look into it. And I always, I don't know, I've always had that in my briefing. So I don't know if anybody else has. But for the most part, I would say that, that is, that is what I do like about petitions and requests. We'd have somebody come, they have an issue. Like Melinda came tonight. She's come before with other issues regarding the alley. And then I would talk to her about it. She talked to Kevin and staff. We'd figure out what's going on. They had an issue with a big truck parking out there. And so there, I would like to say that I, I've seen them get resolved. And again, with a few exceptions, I, I feel like we are making sure and following up with the citizens that do come and request.
Thank you. All right, with all that being said, city clerk, can you call the rule, please?
Let me, let me declare what the.
Yeah. Oh, sorry, it's just advisability to amend the rules of council ordinance. City clerk?
Yes, sir. Vice Mayor Cole?
No.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Moscoso?
No.
Member Nelson?
No.
Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Yes. Motion fails. City manager?
Sir, I just have three informational items on my report, no action items.
Thank you very much. City attorney?
Yes, senior packet, you have the legal services agreement with Balk and Bingham to end your requested action tonight, is to approve the legal services agreement and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
Can I have a motion to approve, hold on, I'll take the motion first, and I'll call cards.
Motion to approve.
Second.
The motion is second. Cards, Stan?
Stan Johnston.
It's about an agreement for an attorney for additional legal services. I'd have to check. Give me one second.
Bachman Bingham is only if necessary. So it's not that he has a job, but if Ms. Farrell needs additional help, she has somebody to call.
So she'll have somebody to help her. Okay, well, she needs help. She needs help. So I'm going to, I'm going to ask for approval on this, but, but also.
City clerk?
Okay, thank you. But this is, this is a serious issue, what you guys are in trouble with. And my understanding is that when I had trouble with, with public records, I reported our city attorney, listen to this, I reported our city attorney to the state attorney. The state attorney is who you should be talking to. They're the ones who straighten out these guys. In other words, when, when, when the state attorney talks to Richard Broome, he stands on, he stands at attention. They're the ones that are supposed to protect you. Listen to that. Okay? So anyhow, we need help. She needs help. So let's get something done. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any council discussions? CNN, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Wait, we have to do the second petitions and requests.
Oh, yeah.
Since we moved it.
Anybody up for a second petitions request? Everybody's already spoken already?
I could tell you that before.
Hold on, I need a motion to extend the meeting.
No, I'm not going to take three minutes, I promise. I just want to point out that there are other cities that handle things. Orlando, for instance, has a business section, and they have a comment, public participation section in their meetings, and they're separated by sometimes hours. One is in the morning, one's in the afternoon. Look into it.
That was kind of the point of advisability, but thank you. Yeah, thank you. All right, motion to adjourn.
Motion to leave.
Second. Thank you.